The. Thank you very much. Good evening. I'd like to call the September 3rd, 2024 meeting of the North Bend City Council to order. And the clerk please call roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Alan Gotthelf.
Here.
Councilmember Brendan Elwood.
Present.
Councilmember Mark Jocelyn.
Present.
Councilmember Heather Cullen.
Here.
Councilmember Christina Rustic.
Present.
Councilmember Susan Torgerson.
Here.
Councilmember Errol Tramalana.
Here.
All are present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Can Mayor Pro Tem Alan Gotthelf please lead us in the flag scene? Thank you.
My pleasure. Great. Pleasure leading to the flag of the United States of America and to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Gotthelf, and thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. We've got a bit of an agenda and we'll get moving with it. So I will, um, let's see. Well, we will now move on to consent agendas, what we'll do. We have five items on the consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve consent?
Oh, that was a. Okay, we have a motion second. Okay, Mr. Elwood and Second Amendment Miss Cullen, thank you very much, both of you. Um, let's see, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries and is unanimous. Before we move on to citizen comments, as indicated in tonight's agenda, if you are attending remotely and would like to submit public comment, please submit your written comments via in-person drop-off mail fax or email to askopadall@northbendwa.gov by 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting. And we are no longer taking public comments for those attending remotely via Zoom unless they have reached out to the city clerk in advance of the meeting to request accommodations. Uh, we will move on now to citizen comments. At this time, if you would like to make a comment not on the agenda tonight, we would invite you to come forward to the podium. If you have requested accommodation with the city clerk and wish to speak during citizen comments, please raise your hand through the virtual platform and we'll take your comments after in-person comments. Please state your name, your address, and where you live. If it's unincorporated King County or North Bend, we'd love to know. Okay, come on forward. Thank you for being with us tonight.
I'm Linda Reed. I live across the street at 702 Maloney Grove Avenue Southeast.
Welcome, Linda.
And I'd like to make a challenge to all of you. You just spent, I don't know, you spent thousands or millions of dollars to redo this intersection and make it more dangerous. But I would like to ask that the next time you design an intersection, the engineers get out from behind their computers and drive the intersection to talk to the people that use it. Because what has happened is, and I'm going to ask every one of you tonight, when you leave here, drive right out of the this parking lot, turn left on Maloney Grove, turn around and come back and try to make a left turn onto Cedar Falls. Because it used to be dangerous, but you could drive up and make it a right, a right angle so you could see the upcoming traffic. Now they put in an island so you can't even do that. So I know at least three of my neighbors came here and talked about it and were told we were too late. Well, nobody came and talked to us. So by the time the newspaper talked about it, it was already planned. So if you come out there and you try to look to the right to make a left turn, you have to, now I'm 74 years old, I'm lucky, I can look behind my back. But you have to actually turn and look behind your back to see the oncoming traffic. And then if you have a seat with a, I don't know what you call it, anyway, you can't see through it. It's a very dangerous intersection. So all I'm asking is next time you plan an intersection, please talk to the people that use it and do better. And then they told us it was all about pedestrians and safety. Well, the pedestrians that use that intersection go to a preschool that's on the other side of the street. They put the crosswalk on this side of the street. So all the mothers that walk their kids down still have to cross the street with no, no crosswalk. So anyway, if everybody please, when you leave here, turn right, turn left on Maloney Grove, turn around and try to make a left turn. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Appreciate your comments. Anybody else? Martin? Welcome, Martin.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Martin Vulcan. Live on 909 Northeast Sixth Street. And I wanted to point out also a public safety concern. Um, has to do with the, the intersection or the, on Second Street where my business is located between Main and Bendigo. So a lot of people use that sort of these days as a, as a bypass to get into, to get onto Bendigo Boulevard. And they're driving sometimes really fast. Um, and in my sort of conservative estimate, there's about like between 30 and 40,000 people a year crossing the parking lot to get into my business, the coffee shop and the wine shop. And I think it might be sort of like, it's, I think it's kind of a matter of time until somebody's going to get nailed there. So maybe come and have a look. Um, maybe a speed bump. I don't know what a good traffic calming solution would be, but I think it's, but I think it's something that we have to sort of take seriously. It is like the major parking lot in downtown North Bend. So that's the first thing. Uh, the second thing is, is something that I have like pointed out to all sorts of people here in the city. Um, it has to do with the stormwater drain or rather the smell of it. Um, I've talked to Brandon about it. I've talked to, I know Mary, you're aware of it. I've talked to Mark about it. Um, and I've talked to the construction crew about it when they built it and it said it smells bad and it's sort of been like, well, it's going to go away when it's all been disturbed. It's going to get, go away with the first rains and then it's going to go away later. And then they came back and then anyway, I feel like I, if I didn't know any better, I sort of feel like I haven't been heard. So maybe please, please take care of it because it's a, it's an unpleasant smell, sort of like it's a sewer type smell that is like wafting out of like the storm drain right in front of our outdoor cafe. And it's the same thing for the, for the folks, um, who own the wine shop. Those are my two concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Oh, thank you. Come on up.
Yes, I'm Jean Buckner, 46226 Southeast 139th Place. And I'm here to talk about, uh, the concept that I presented last time at City Council where I talked to you about the features of a potential park, gateway to the Middle Fork Park. And I think we went over the glyce rink and climbing wall, daycare, uh, possibly bringing some businesses from downtown to satellite out there, all with the same concept of outdoor natural recreation. Well, today I want to talk more about what would be the benefit of such a park to the city. And I want to talk about how the city can exploit, and I mean exploit in a good way, the natural beauty of our city and location. I would believe that such a park could synergistically connect the center of downtown North Bend with the east side. That's always been a problem of not really feeling connected as a community here in North Bend. And other communities we could connect with as well if we had transportation that would bring folks into the city, avoid the traffic hassle. I know King County is already bringing in buses to take folks to the trailheads, but let's bring them back to North Bend. Let's bring them back to the city, to the center of downtown. So one concept would be a transportation plan that would bring folks out to the Middle Fork for the trails. And then they could hang out there at the park and then they could go back into downtown for dinner or what have you. So I just wanted to let you folks know that such a park would have synergistic impacts on the city that aren't really obvious when you first take a look at a park. But look at Exit 32 and how that area has organically become a little business hub. That could happen in Exit 34. I would envision a much bigger business hub, but the same kind of feel, the same kind of North Bendy feel. And that's why I am supporting such a concept. There are several other organizations that are ready to jump in and support this concept if the city gives a nod. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Anybody else? Anybody online for us tonight, Ree?
Yes, Your Honor, we have one online participant wishing to speak. That would be Mike Thomas.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Mike? Michael?
Yep, I'm unmuted now.
Great, you're on.
Thanks. Uh, Mike Thomas, 1231 La Forest Drive SE. I'm approaching also my, uh, my 10th year in, uh, North Bend. Uh, I chose to make North Bend our home, uh, nearly 10 years ago. And in middle of September, it will actually be officially 10 years that I've lived here. I can't help but, you know, notice our incredible natural awe and beauty in view of an incredible asset, you know, we have, uh, in the parks nearby. Um, the Middle Fork Road development, the Middle Fork Road really consists of multiple collaborations by multiple agencies, including DNR, King County, uh, the U.S. Forest Service, you know, just tons of trails. I think people really, um, enjoy that. And I think that's potentially one of the next, you know, next gateways. And I know there was an old concept to make the area around Exit 34 really the natural gateway to North Bend. As you enter from the east, wouldn't it be great to make that the natural gateway? Also concerned though, as you enter from the west, our other bookend of town, you know, is a 350,000 square foot warehouse or office complex, you know, listening to its recent hearings. So I'm concerned about, you know, how we keep our natural beauty. I also wanted to expand a little bit also, uh, and Jean shared with you a little bit about, uh, Exit 32. And I've really taken note of what's happened at Exit 32. Um, of course, up 32, you have, you know, the Cedar, you know, the Cedar River Watershed Education Center, you have the Rattlesnake Lake Park, uh, you have multiple trailheads. And that is another asset to our area. And it kind of occurred really by happenstance. And look at what's going on there. You have a restaurant, you have a wonderful frisbee, you know, golf course, you have a convenience store and some small, you know, retail in the form of, let's say, bike and equipment rental. And, and I think that's organically developed and that's kind of served as an unintended, you know, anchor point. Now, as I listened to, you know, a few work studies and the annual retreat, you know, the city is struggling how to tie, you know, east North Bend, you know, since the annexation really into the city. You know, what better way to do that, to consider, you know, a different type of development out there, a park, um, outdoor and indoor recreation, you know, some low-impact restaurants, um, light retail like bike, biking or, or other equipment. Um, that would help, you know, bring the community to the east side as well as provide a focal point, you know, for eastern residents. There's also no park on the eastern side of the city. There's no, there's no large park there. So I would hope that as, you know, as we start thinking about, you know, planning, future developments and, you know, our zoning, that, uh, we have consideration really to making, you know, the Exit 34 really our natural resource gateway to the Middle Fork. Thank you. And this concludes my comment.
Thank you, Michael. Ree, do we have anybody else? Oh, we're going, we're going to bounce back. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, Peter Nissen. Uh, I live at 46325 Southeast 24th Street. Our property is one of the four properties that juts into what's called the EP2 zone. And I just want to echo what the last two people said. Um, I certainly, I've been in that field many, many times, uh, and it's a gorgeous field. I mean, there's views of the mountains all the way around. And it just seems to me it would be horrible ways to pave it and have a car, a giant car lot. I mean, the truck stop is already there and that's a given. Um, but it doesn't seem like to continue in that vein is the highest and best use of what's really a gorgeous piece of property. Uh, it just would seem to be.
Sir, I'm sorry to cut you off. I apologize, but this is a time when we talk about items that are not on our agenda, just so you know, for your reference point.
Okay, well, I thought the last.
Point of order, Your Honor, uh, building an auto mall is not on tonight's agenda. I think he's fine and should proceed.
Okay, we're, we're good with that? Everybody good with that? Okay, my apologies. Continue.
Okay, that was mentioned, that that was under consideration. An auto mall for that area was amongst other things. So to me, that sort of a thing would just be a horrible waste of that gorgeous piece of land. So that's all I have to say. And I certainly don't think anyone should make a decision on it without walking out there in the middle of that field and taking a look around.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay. Right there. Welcome.
Thank you. It's hers online. Same motion there. Glad I didn't miss it. Uh, Jason Ritchie, 2802 Southeast 16th Street. Um, two items. I don't believe her on the agenda, so I think I'm safe. Um, but hopefully, thank you. Hopefully, you're timely. Um. The first item, uh, regards police services. Um, so last night, um, uh, we had someone in our neighborhood that was snooping through our property, um, went through several neighbors' property. Um, I called the police. And, um, spent considerable time outside watching this person go house to house, uh, for about 40, 45 minutes. No one came. Uh, now luckily, this was not life or death. This is someone snooping through porches, but what I want to task you guys with, because I know this is something when the last elections were coming up, we were talking about the potential of, um, future police contracts. There's with snowpoe, with any situation, obviously, there's cost factor and things like that. But I want to challenge all of you to ask yourself if what we expect from our service is actually good enough. Are the SLAs that we demand out of our contract good enough? Um, and what we get for our money good enough? Because it's one thing to spend a bunch of money on a service and something as critical as public safety. But if residents can't trust it, um, what, what good is that money? Um, so I, I just challenge you to not think status quo and think about what we're getting for the money and what we expect out of the service. We are, especially if we're contracting, we are the customer at that, at that point. Uh, my second point is on, um, uh, the land out at Exit 34, actually not really about that. Development in general. So the, obviously, the state controls property taxes and a lot of things like that. There's a lot of restriction on how the, the city can, um, increase its budgets. Um, the hotel's a great idea because that's a place where we can get new budgets and new, or new, uh, new revenue from a new source. My challenge to you all is to, as you think about Exit 34 plans or any new places, to make sure that its highest and best use is ways that we can continue to drive fiscal, uh, sustainability for the city. Thanks.
Thank you, Jason. Anybody else from the community here? Thank you very much. Okay, we will now move on to announcements, presentations, and appointments. Uh, item number six, AB 24-085, youth appointment to Parks Commission. Uh, Planning Commission Youth Position Number Five became vacant with expiration of Kaylee McGee's term on August 31st, 2024. On July 8th, myself, CED Director Rebecca Demming, and Principal Planner Mike McCarty interviewed Ethan Isubio for the youth position for the 2024-2025 school year. I'm recommending the appointment of Ethan as youth member of the Parks Commission due to his enthusiasm to serve as a volunteer in the community and his passion for recreation outdoors. Uh, Councilmember Gotthelf, would you please make the motion?
Wow. Talk about before I make the motion.
Okay, you know what? I'm jumping away. Okay, everybody talk. This is my young man.
Yeah, no, I didn't know if there wanted to be any discussion before.
Well, we, we can do that.
Or I can make the motion, whatever.
Well, actually, we can make the motion first and then I'll talk to Ethan and we'll figure it out.
Perfect. Motion to approve AB 24-085, confirming the appointment of Ethan.
Isubio.
Isubio.
I hope I didn't kill your name.
Member position. I'm apologizing. Position five on the Parks Commission, term expiring August 31st, 2025.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Mr. Gotthelf and Second Amendment Mr. Jocelyn. Thank you much. And you both, you can start.
Sure. First, thank you for stepping up. Um, you know, any of these commissions take a lot of work.
Um, I'm sorry to hold. Let's bring Ethan up here. Boy, we're just running ahead of you, Ethan. I apologize. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Hopefully, I didn't touch your name too badly.
Uh, no worries.
Could you tell us what the last name?
Uh, Ethan Isubio.
Isubio.
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate you stepping up. Um, great way to, to learn a lot of stuff and, and get involved with the city and these programs, we really appreciate it because we really need volunteers to step up to it. So.
Thank you.
Thank you for stepping up and I think we're looking forward to having you on Youth Convention.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Mr. Jocelyn, you have anything to say?
Well, again, uh, thank you. Public service is a calling. Uh, it's not easy as we're, uh, going to continue to experience here this evening. It's wonderful that you're here and getting a sense of the ebb and flow of it. Uh, serving on the Parks Commission is a significant commitment for a, a young person like yourself. You have a busy life with lots going on. I will, I will take a moment to note that your predecessor, Kayla McGee, has entered college at Lewis and Clark Community College in Illinois, so she's off to a bright future, we hope, uh, having served in the position that you have now, uh, very thankfully stepped up to fill. So thank you.
Thank you for the support.
Thank you. Anybody else in council, Ms. Cullen?
Thank you, Ethan. We need your youth. We need your young mind as we're sometimes old and stuck on our ways. And you have a fresh mindset and we're super appreciative of that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else like to? Thank you very much.
I'm just going to say thank you for, uh, volunteering your time. And I know as a high school student, you're probably really busy with many things, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody else? I missed. Well, I might just add then that Ethan, it was a delight to meet you and interview you with two other colleagues. Uh, I find you very, you know, you're intelligent for sure. You're so engaging. Um, I hope you have a best time, a great, great experience. Our Parks Commissioners are wonderful human beings. And I look forward to all you could do to promote the youth in the valley and what they have to say. So welcome aboard and thank you a ton.
Thank you.
All right. And, oh, yeah, we have something to give you. I'm not going to ever miss a picture on this. Are you kidding? We're celebrating. Uh, don't, don't go away. Stay there. This will do the picture personally. This is what we have to do. I don't know why my chair always goes off.
There's, there's a lever.
That's what I said.
Then it's like this.
I need to lock it. Thank you.
It's one of these.
Thank you. Someone's rocking. All right. Thank you, everybody, for that. It's always fun to greet our youth and have them experience. Okay. What's that? Uh. We have to vote for that.
We never voted.
We don't. Let's, let's vote away.
Yeah.
We'll fall for the vote now.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Okay, do I have a motion? Let's see, we have a motion. Yep. So all, all, all approve. All ayes or, let's see.
Approved.
Okay. Well, that was.
Aye.
Yes. There's a aye in the house. Uh, it is unanimous and welcome aboard again, Ethan. Okay, uh. Okay, so council, the motion before you is, we just missed that one, so we're moving along. Boy, I'm skipping away. Um, okay, item number seven is proclamation, Senior Center Month. And I'm very proud to read this to everybody. Uh, whereas older Americans are significant members of our society, investing in their wisdom and experience to help enrich and strengthen our community. And whereas Mountsi Senior Center has acted as a catalyst for mobilizing the creativity, energy, vitality, and commitment of the older residents of North Bend. And whereas through the wide array of services, programs, and activities, our community's senior center empowers older citizens of North Bend to contribute to their own health and well-being and the health of and well-being of their fellow citizens of all ages. And whereas during the pandemic, Mountsi Senior Center has been a community partner in ensuring that our most vulnerable citizens, people age 65 and older, many with underlying medical conditions, are cared for and able to stay safe and healthy. And whereas the Mountsi Senior Center affirms the dignity, self-worth, and independence of older persons by facilitating their decisions and actions, tapping their experiences, skills, and knowledge, and enabling their continued contributions to the community. Therefore, now, therefore, I, Mary Miller, Mayor, do hereby proclaim September 2024 as Senior Center Month. And the city of North Bend and call upon all citizens to recognize the special contributions of the Senior Center participants and the special efforts of the staff and volunteers who work every day to enhance the well-being of the older citizens of our community. Congratulations. Is Susan here?
Yeah.
Hi, Susan. There you are. Come on up. Okay. Want to do a photo op first? Maybe let's do a photo op first. Susan, before you start.
Excellent.
Get away. Wait for a break to for seconds. We're starting up. Where else? I'm going to put that over there. Okay. Okay, Susan, you're at the podium, but this is item number eight, presentation, Mountsi Senior Center Community Needs Assessment. Thank you for being here.
Absolutely. Thank you. I'm Susan Kingsbury Como, Executive Director of Mountsi Senior Center. And, um, I'm here tonight to, uh, present our recent community needs assessment. It was important to do a community needs assessment now as we saw that the community was changing. The community of older adults was changing as in response to COVID with the economy being what it is and the inflow of new residents. So, um, Suzie, if you go to the, sorry, Ree? Uh, the power, the PowerPoint? Should be somewhere. I'll fill a little time here. Um, like all, like all community needs assessments, we used a healthy dose of secondary data. And, um, this looks like this might be the report and we're looking for the PowerPoint. All right, I'll get us a couple of slides along while we're looking for the PowerPoint. Um, so we used a healthy dose of secondary data, but we wanted to fill in the gaps, uh, that with, with information that's not been collected by other studies. So we conducted a survey with nearly 300 people responding. We ran focus groups and we interviewed partners and providers. Um, when we get to the PowerPoint, you'll see this really fun page, uh, that summarizes the demographics of our survey respondents. A couple of things to note are that nearly half the respondents live with one or more disability. They have a lower household income and they experience a cost burden due to housing. That's not a surprise where we live. And three quarters, this was a. And three quarters, this was a surprising result, actually, and and very hopeful. Three quarters of, uh, the survey respondents reported social contact daily or multiple times each week. But that still means that there's nearly twenty-five percent of our folks who aren't having regular contact with, with others. You getting there? Okay, great. I'm on slide four. So our primary service area is North Bend and Snoqualmie, and in that area, twenty-two percent of the population is fifty-five or older. And that percentage is only going to grow. Also, our fifty-five-plus population is becoming increasingly diverse. If you want to go to slide four, I want to show the fun page. Okay, so go back up one. Sorry, slide three, I guess. I switched the numbers around. So this is the fun page, um, with some of the demographics that we found. It's fun because it's not all bullet points. Um, anyway, like I said, sixteen percent of folks don't have any social contact each week, but that means that nearly seventy-five percent or nearly seventy percent, no, nearly eighty percent, I can do math, um, do have some, quite a bit of social contact. Our seniors are definitely cost burdened by housing between property taxes or, you know, those lingering mortgages. Um, and, and when you think that sixty-three percent, when you consider that sixty-three percent are still homeowners, that's, that's really important. Um, thirty-six percent of the folks responding to the survey earned less than thirty, there's less, earned less than fifty thousand annually. And sixty-three percent earned less than a hundred thousand annually. So that's, you know, folks that are under the area median income. Something to keep in mind. We, as you know, own senior, affordable senior housing, and so we're always looking at what we can do to help people continue to live in their, live in a home in this community that they love so much. Uh, go forward two slides. Please, thank you. All right, great. We're on, we're on, we're on course now. Um, so many people want the same things as they get older. They want to stay in their own homes. They want to maintain their independence, and they want to turn to family and friends when they need help. This is called aging in place. It's what, you know, all of us in the senior senior industry call aging in place. Our survey respondents rate North Bend and Snoqualmie as average when it comes to the ability to age in place. They indicate that there's a lack of affordable home healthcare, healthcare professionals speaking different languages, specialists and well-trained healthcare professionals, and certified home healthcare providers. This is a serious gap in our community. How people can stay in their homes when they can't get the medical help that they need that's local because they're not getting on I ninety? Or getting people into their home to help them. They need help, but they need, they need, also need their friends and family. Next slide, please. While most respondents want to age in place in our community, they are most concerned with access to quality healthcare facilities, the cost of maintaining their current home, access to transportation, personal safety and security. And in fact, these are things that I think you want to go one slide back. These are things that the Senior Center, oh, okay. I sent you the wrong thing. These are things that the Senior Center, um, definitely can provide and does provide. With the exception of the healthcare stuff, we, we help people.
Excuse me.
Mm-hmm.
Could you, no, this is me up here. Could you just re, we were looking at the slide was just.
Yeah, sure.
If you could just repeat.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks. Thanks for asking. So what most people want when they think about where they're going to age is they want access to quality healthcare facilities. They want, they're, they're concerned about the cost of maintaining their current home. They want access to transportation. And they have personal safety and security concerns. And often that takes the form, you know, as an aside, that takes the form of like elder abuse, elder financial abuse. They're very concerned about that. All right, let's go forward to slide. We'll see what happens. Perfect. Um, looking at Mountside Senior Center, we find that our most popular programs are those that you've come to rely on us for. That's lunch, fitness, social, social events, volunteering, and arts activities. We also find that our programs connect seniors to resources. We also find that our programs that connects people to resources through our senior advocate. While a vital resource in and of herself um, is, is an area where we need to do more to raise awareness about the fact that we have someone who can help you connect with financial assistance or finding home healthcare or finding that new place to live or a place to live at all. We have a Medicare advisor. So we've got people who are helping with insurance and all this sort of aspects of life, a lot of which happens on not, happens online now. And a lot of our seniors are not as fluent or comfortable being on site, online as others. Next slide. All right, so when you're talking about senior centers, you think about, I know what I thought about. I was like, if senior centers can't do bingo and trips, what are they doing? Um, and that's sort of, sort of what we found. Um, demand for our current programs differs by age group. Our oldest folks, or sorry, the, the average age of the person that comes to the Senior Center is seventy-three. So there's sort of this age group, seventy to eighty-five. They're looking for fitness activities, day trips, lunch programs, and social activities. The people who are oldest, the eighty-year-olds and older, they're looking for housing they can afford. And they're looking for online programming, which was a big surprise to us because we've tried that and it didn't fly. So there's others out there that we're not reaching. But our Senior Center serves people fifty and older because we want to catch people before they, they sort of fall into certain patterns, you know, and start aging not well. Um, and when we surveyed folks, we actually talked to people forty-five and older because those guys are going to be aging into our age, into our ser, service group very soon. And they're most interested in programs like trips and fitness activities, but they're also interested in arts, crafts, and music. And according to my clock, it's seven forty somewhere. Um, that's my reminder to go home from work every night. Um, so anyway, what people want differs by age, and that's really important if we're going to be planning for the long term. Next slide. This is just more of, oh, this is engagement, right? Why do people not use the Senior Center? And here's the shocker. Most people don't consider themselves as an older adult or a senior. And there's a stigma that goes with it. No one wants that label, except that when you're looking for a Senior Center, the first thing you Google is Senior Center. So it's, it's catch twenty-two. Um, it's, it's probably one of the biggest battles we're going to have going forward. Um, also, people who are still working or with families have household obligations and family obligations. And there, those are the folks who are telling us that the activities that we offer between nine and four are not, are not at convenient times for them. There's more here and in the report, but I'm going to ask you to go to the next slide, please. So we know Snoqualmie is beautiful. It's a welcoming place. There's a strong sense of community. These are amazing strengths. The sense of community is huge. It makes our center so much different than other centers all throughout King County. But the rural nature limits access to caregiving and transportation. Also, the lack of medical facilities, which I mentioned before, is a problem. And seniors are concerned about personal safety, technology, financial abuse, that sort of thing. We have some opportunities. We can continue to expand our service and draw in more users through partnerships. We've already done that by working with, uh, Snow Valley Senior Center and Isqas Senior Center to bring programs and trusted partners from Seattle and Bellevue to North Bend so that we're able to provide Spanish language programming, programming for the East Indian community, programming for the LGBTQ community, but we know that we're not the people who necessarily have all the skills or are seen as a trusted host, and so we partner with others. We're also told that we are the suitable leader for improving advocacy and awareness of senior needs. This will end up being an area of focus going forward for us. We know that we want to help not only the seniors that we help now, but those who are coming, are aging into our catchment or our client base. And those seniors are increasingly healthier, more diverse, and more tech-literate. We're going to have to change what we do or not so much what we do, but how we do it and add in some new things. And I don't recall, but I think the next slide says thank you, or it's a continuation of this. Oh, yeah, there's still volunteering opportunities. There's opportunities for us in online programming. This is something that's actually, for those who are technic, technologically literate, they're connecting across the country already. Um, and we need to be, we need to do more in that area. Our marketing needs to improve, but we also, at the same time, have to address the stigma associated with aging. So we'll be looking at rebranding. I, if I could look at my crystal ball, we're going into a strategic planning process based on this. And I would say that branding is going to be one of those topics that's going to show up. But in the meanwhile, I encourage you during Senior Center Month to talk to your family, to your friends, to your neighbors. Let them know that we're here, that we provide a lot of fun, good meal, but we also have a lot of resources. And, um, most of all, I'd like to thank you for funding this. It was because of the city of North Bend that we were able to pull off this community needs assessment with the ARPA funds from, I want to say, a year ago. And, um, this is really critical information because we're at a particular point where things are changing, and we need this to be able to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan, and just stay there for a moment. Anyone from council have any questions for Susan?
I do. Could you explain, thank you for the presentation. That was awesome. Um, could you explain a little bit more what the online programming means? I'm not sure.
Yeah, so, well, for us, it, during COVID, it meant that we were, we were offering online conversations, online support groups, that sort of thing. There's a lot of work that we need to do in that area because we found that the seniors who we were serving, at least prior to COVID and during COVID, weren't particularly technologically literate, or they weren't, they weren't interested in the online stuff. And what they were doing instead was meeting at each other's homes despite the pandemic. So they, they really want personal interaction. However, there's quite a few people who have worked or been involved in the senior services industry, one way or another, for a very long time. And they're involved in some amazing online programs that are nationwide. This is, like I said, this is not an area that we've moved into yet. I envision, though, that, you know, imagine the caregiver who can't leave their home, who needs a support group anyway. They can, you know, put the family member to bed or in front of a TV or whatever, you know, and still step over into the next room and get that support that they need or, or fill their cup. I mean, there's always things online. It seems like I tried to do a paint class online. It was not, you know, for me personally, that satisfying, but, um, it could be for others. So I don't know where that's going to take us exactly. Thanks for the question.
I really didn't have a question. I just wanted to thank you for your service. You've been part of Senior Center for many years. Went through the pandemic, and so there's a lot of issues there. And I know, as you say, you've got an alarm that says seven-four to go home later than most of us.
I, I used to remember when you guys showed up, like, I'd be like, oh, crap, I have to go.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for your tireless effort on behalf of the.
Thanks, Alan. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yes, thank you. I appreciate it. We had a chance to talk about this time last year, so a quick question. At that time, you were concerned about state funding.
Yeah.
Has it improved, gone down, or stayed about the same?
It's all over the place. So the funding that we were particularly concerned with last year was around our nutrition program. And federal funding for nutrition programs got cut. Every senior center in North Bend, or sorry, in King County saw a forty percent cut in their nutrition funding. What we did in response was when we made a heck of a case for additional funding from City of Seattle, which we got the end of last year. Um, North Bend again came in and said, we can help out with some ARPA funds and have given me a very flexible timeline, which is hugely important because my situation is going to be going, the situation at the Senior Center is going to be going for four years. Where I'm constantly going to be trying to rob Peter to pay Paul and feed everyone. What we also did was we went out and we went to a bunch of funders and made a, you know, a great request. And now I've got like ten funders for the nutrition program. However, the challenge is that each one of them wants to fund only a specific sort of thing within a specific amount of time with, you know, copious reports involved. So I've got a four-year month-by-month plan for, funding for the nutrition program. I'm good for this year, so I'm going to hold on to those ARPA funds from North Bend, but I am not so good for next year. So I keep, I just keep beating the bushes. We had tried for Washington State Department of Agriculture funds. Got to the second round, and we got denied. So we haven't found the big funder to come in yet.
Uh, yes, thank you, of course. Uh, there is no question that you, your service, and the Senior Center improve people's lives in this community in ways that are meaningful beyond our knowing. Um, you feed people, you connect people to each other. Uh, I have no doubt, but that number of, whatever the language was of North Bend being, and Snoqualmie being a good place to retire would be significantly lower if not for your presence. Uh, so thank you. Um, and yes, I will start identifying as a senior. I'm.
Okay, it's going to be a person-by-person battle. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, Heather.
I just want to thank you, and I want you to know that your efforts are felt far and wide. And I had a colleague who said her grandmother was living in Las Vegas and was feeling lonely. And I said, let's call the Senior Center in Las Vegas. And we, there was not one, and that's a big city. So that was shocking. And so thank you so much, and we're very, very fortunate to have you.
I'll see if I can find you some other resources.
Ms. Cohen, appreciate that. Heather, you told me that story. I couldn't believe it either. So, yeah. Anybody else? Um, Susan, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Presentation for all that you do. I know for a fact that you work tireless, tirelessly, and I will see you for lunch pretty soon here.
Yes, I can't wait. You're all welcome. Please come to lunch anytime. Let me know, and I'll even leave my office. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you again, everybody. Bree, if I can check in with you, is our presentation, is Martin online for us?
Martin is on.
I'm mayor, I am.
Okay, thank you, Martin. I know Martin's not been, hasn't been feeling well, but I really appreciate, we all appreciate you, uh, being here tonight online with a na, nice background. And, uh, so here we go. This is, uh, item number nine. It's a presentation for the second quarter financial status report. Mr. Shaw, will you please provide the report for us all? Thank you.
Absolutely. Well, let me get set up here. Mayor, give me a second. All right, can everyone see my computer screen okay?
Yes, we can, Martin.
All right, very good. All right, um, this is the, uh, for the record, Martin Shaw, uh, Finance Director, City of North Bend. Uh, this is a, about a fifteen-minute presentation. Um, it's a repeat of the same presentation I gave to the Finance and Administration Committee on August thirteenth. This is the, uh, uh, first six months financial states report for the city. Um, and I just want to preface, um, and I've mentioned this to the, uh, committee, you know, in doing these, um, reports. You, in my world, uh, boring is good, right? And, um, and that's the case for this report. It's, uh, it's, there's not a whole lot of, lot of excitement in here for you. Um, terms of an executive summary for you all, council, uh, we ended the first six months in positive financial condition for, um, all funds. Uh, the general fund, uh, ended, uh, with a, um, uh, with a fund balance of about six point three million. Um, and that was sufficient to cover, uh, total operating expenses, which was, uh, worth about five and a half million. Um, in terms of local economic activity, uh, development-related revenues were slightly lower than last year, and that reflects on timing. And that reflects on timing of permanent revenues uh, as well as a cooling economy. In terms of the cooling economy, and I'll go over this in the next presentation. Um, this region reflects the Federal Reserve's uh, attempt at cooling inflation and controlling inflation. So that we um, come in uh, to what's called soft landing by the end of this year. Uh, this graphic here illustrates the uh, or compares the beginning fund balance at the beginning of twenty twenty-four versus the uh, fund balance uh, for each fund at the um, uh, at June uh, twenty twenty-four. So as you can see, um, our funds were in positive financial condition. Um, and they're performing as expected. Terms of the general fund, again, as I mentioned, our revenues were sufficient uh, to cover expenses and thereby would grew our fund balance from five, five point six million uh, to about six point three million. And that compares to a budgeted ending fund balance of four point seven million. Uh, you've seen this graphic before, and this is a line graph that shows or compares revenue collections by month uh, between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Uh, so for example, the uh, orange line here uh, represents our cumulative um, sales tax collections. Uh, the solid line represents twenty twenty-three. Uh, the dotted line represents twenty twenty-four. Uh, so we have sales taxes, property taxes, utility taxes, business licenses. And then the last one here are our development fees. And as you can see, for all revenue sources, they're performing as expected and consistent with uh, collection levels from the previous year. For the development fees, we did see a pop in June of twenty twenty-three. And that reflects the permanent revenues that we received from the DR Horton and Dogren projects. Uh, special revenue funds, um, again, all funds were in positive financial condition. Uh, the streets operating fund, as you can see here, this one uh, was probably one of the only exceptions where we uh, uh, where our expenses exceeded uh, revenues. Um, and this will be corrected in the um, in the following binding. But for all the other funds, as you can see, for the twenty twenty-four current period uh, fund balance, uh, we're all in positive financial condition here. Uh, capital funds, um, for listening public, these are the funds that are used to account for expenses uh, used for um, a capital construction activities, uh, building roads, uh, facilities, uh, et cetera. Uh, we have two funds, uh, the largest of which is the municipal um, projects fund. And as you can see here, for this fund, we ended uh, the uh, June with about hundred seventy-four thousand. Uh, part of this reflects the timing of, of revenues as well as expenses that uh, that are spent for projects. Uh, some of the grants that we receive for projects, uh, they're on a reimbursement basis. Uh, so in other words, uh, the grantor will reimburse the city once the expenses are, are made. Uh, so again, there's a slight timing issue there. Uh, the real estate excise tax or the REIT program, Fund Three Twenty. Uh, again, for the listing public, uh, this fund is used to account for the uh, real estate excise taxes that are paid uh, at time of a real estate transaction. Right? So if you sell a house, um, part of the sales price for that house or based on the sales price of the house, you're, you'll be paying a um, a real estate excise tax. Um, and uh, this fund here accounts for the city's uh, share of those taxes. And as you can see, we collected about four hundred and fifty thousand, spent about two hundred and eighty thousand, and we um, we have accumulated uh, fund balance here about five point uh, million dollars. Our enterprise programs, this is for the utilities, uh, water, sewer, storm and solid waste. Um, as you can see here, in terms of, of each funds ending fund balance, um, we are in positive financial condition. Uh, we do see here that, for example, water ops and sewer operations, that their expenses exceeded revenues uh, through the first six months. Um, but again, this reflects the timing of, of um, of service charges for water and sewer operations specifically. And what we would expect is um, as the uh, several months progress um, and folks use more water uh, for outdoor watering, uh, keeping their gardens green, et cetera, uh, that the charges for services will increase. Uh, so we'll begin to close the gap um, as the year progresses uh, between revenues and expenses. Uh, similar to the general fund revenue collection line, um, sewer, water, storm, uh, twenty twenty-three compared to twenty twenty-four. As you can see, collections are right in target with um, past experience. And I would expect this to, these trends to continue through the remainder of twenty twenty-four uh, with um, with water, sewer and stormwater saves. Internal service funds, um, again, for listing public, these are funds that are established uh, to account for services that are provided uh, to other city departments. Um, in this case, equipment operations and equipment reserves. Um, again, as you can see here, both funds ended the um, uh, June twenty twenty-four with um, uh, positive financial condition and exceeding um, the budgeted ending fund balance for twenty twenty-four. I may won't go over this slide, but uh, this is uh, just a definition slide for uh, the listening public as to uh, the families or the fund families uh, and what each of these fund families are used for in terms of counting for the resources and revenues and uh, the expenses that, that are used for uh, for each of these funds.
Thank you.
So that concludes my presentation. Um, I'm happy to take any questions, uh, council and mayor.
Thank you, Martin. Uh, any questions from council? My group. Thank you, Martin, for that great presentation. I hope you rally and feel better soon.
Oh, thanks, ma'am.
We have one more for you.
Yes, we do have one more.
Not going anywhere, right?
Let me, yes, let me, let me get the setup.
Okay. Let me know when you're ready.
Uh, yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to introductions. Item number ten, AB twenty-four zero eight six. Public hearing only, presentation of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six biennial budget. Mr. Shaw, will you please provide the presentation when you're ready?
Uh, yes, I am ready.
Thank you, sir.
Are you able to see my presentation okay, council?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, let me see if I can get this out onto slideshow mode.
There you are.
There, okay. Uh, so again, Martin Shaw, Finance Director, City of North Bend. Uh, this is the first of three public hearings on the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Um, as part of our budget planning, um, we're setting the budget for the next two years. Uh, but we're preparing our financial forecast for the next six uh, after twenty thirty. Um, under state law, um, all cities adopting a budget must um, uh, present their, um, their budget through, via a public hearing. Um, a minimum of two is required uh, for our city. Um, I'm planning on three public hearings. So for the first public hearing, for the listening public, um, this presentation will focus on uh, the state of the regional and national economy and how uh, those uh, national and regional econometric indices are uh, presenting itself in the um, uh, locally uh, for the city of North Bend. Um, so again, I'll cover the uh, what we're seeing in terms of um, of uh, national uh, econometrics and now transition into a general fund financial forecast. Uh, this forecast also incorporates the latest figures from Eastside Fire and Rescue and for the city of Snow Colony, uh, uh, police services contracts. So let's start off at the big picture level, um, national GDP. Uh, this is information that comes in from the King County Office of Economic uh, and Financial Analysis. This is the chief uh, uh, economic um, think tank for the uh, for King County, um, and uh, the, uh, the county's economists relies on data from the state uh, as well as the Federal Reserve, um, and um, as well as other national organizations. Uh, what they're forecasting is, as you can see here, through the rest of twenty twenty-four and into twenty twenty-five, uh, national GDP is estimated to um, bump along at about two, um, uh, about two percent a year. So again, achieving that, that soft landing that um, the Federal Reserve was striving for. Um, you can see where, uh, where we were in recent history uh, with uh, fairly robust growth. Um, and this coincided with the um, uh, with the um, uh, higher inflation rates that uh, uh, was so covered in the uh, in the local press. Here we are in terms of national inflation forecast. Uh, the forecast here is for about uh, a two percent um, inflation rate. And as you can see, compared to um, historicals, we were at around the four to three percent inflation and, and up as high as about seven percent um, in twenty twenty-two. And again, this was widely covered in the press, you know, in terms of higher commodities, groceries, um, cost of living, et cetera. A regional taxable sales forecast, um, so for the city of North Bend, uh, of these uh, uh, our revenues are derived from five major revenue sources. Um, and two of the largest revenue sources that comes in for the city uh, includes our property taxes and sales taxes. And uh, because of that, uh, we pay very close attention to what's happening with our regional taxable retail sales. Um, and that uh, portends to um, to what's happening in terms of local uh, uh, sales tax activities. So in terms of a county-wide taxable retail sales forecast, as you can see here on the third column uh, for listening public, uh, annual growth in taxable retail sales is forecasted to uh, increase to about three and a half to almost four and a half percent um, over the next uh, about uh, eight or nine years. Um, on average, between the twenty-five to thirty-three planning period, it averages about four percent. Uh, these last two columns here, uh, the county uh, monitors and adjusts their revenue forecast on a quarterly basis. So as you can see, what the county did was they pulled back their revenue forecast from their mark. And as you can see, they reduce her forecast uh, quite significantly by about six and a half percent on average. Um, in terms of regional taxable retail sales uh, going out, uh, what we see here are two lines. Uh, the blue line here represents uh, taxable retail sales for cons, for construction activity. So this be for all, all construction. And the orange line represents um, uh, retail sales from new construction. Uh, the reason why this is important is uh, this begins to give us some insight as to uh, what we can expect in terms of, of new, of new construction uh, within the city of North Bend. So what we see here is in prior to twenty twenty, uh, because of the robust economy and um, growth in the city uh, as well as in King County, we see that new construction uh, retail sales exceeded that of of overall construction taxable sales. However, that uh, that trend switched or flipped and starting twenty twenty-two, uh, new construction tax retail sales uh, is um, running up below uh, overall construction taxable sales. So what this means for us locally is a uh, ex- expectation that um, new construction or a new, particularly new residential construction will begin to um, uh, to temper. Terms of, of regional new construction forecast, again, this is data from coming in from King County. They're, they're forecasting a slowdown in twenty twenty-five and then a return to normalized levels at about four and a half to about three and a half percent um, of, of twenty twenty-six and forward. So with this information as context, uh, let's talk a little bit about what uh, these um, national and regional econometrics translate to into uh, local revenues for the city. So let's talk about taxable retail sales first. So this pie chart represents uh, taxable retail sales for the city of North Bend for the year twenty twenty-three. And what we see here is um, when we take a look at taxable retail sales, uh, we see that taxable retail sales from consumer-related activities, that is uh, retail, uh, construction spending and hospitality, which would be our restaurants, makes up about two-thirds of the local economy. Um, and uh, services makes up about uh, the remaining one-third. Now, the reason why this, this split is important, um, is that, is that this split, two-thirds, one-third split is um, is the same as the national economy. So when you talk to economists, um, what they'll cite is that uh, consumers drive about two-thirds of of, of the local economy, or of the, of the economy in general. And we see that, uh, that same ratio uh, bearing out here locally for the city of North Bend. Now, why this is important, um, as I mentioned, uh, property taxes and sales taxes are two of our largest uh, revenue sources, largest five revenue sources. Um, so when we look forward uh, to fiscal sustainability, paying for the services that we need to pay for um, to deliver the quality services that the community has come to expect uh, from the city, uh, we're really relying on, on um, five major revenue sources, two of which are the, are the uh, uh, the lion's share of revenues for us, and that is taxable retail sales and property taxes. So for listening public, if you can keep that in mind, you know, as you think about what's, uh, what's happening here locally um, and where revenues come from to pay for city services. So let's transition into the local revenue forecast. So for, again, for my forecast, we're going out uh, six years after twenty thirty. Um, in general, uh, the trends that I'm using, uh, generally, generally uh, mirror with the regional trends that we just went over. Um, development revenues were forecasting that to slow in twenty twenty-five and then slowly returning to about the two and a half to four and a half percent level starting twenty twenty-six. Sales tax growth, we're forecasting that will uh, average about four to four and a half percent per year. And uh, property taxes would grow at about one percent uh, per year. And again, for listening public, um, under state law, um, our property taxes can grow no more or no faster than one percent uh, per year. So as I mentioned, um, several slides earlier, um, about eighty percent of our revenues is derived from five major revenue sources. Uh, this includes uh, property taxes, sales taxes, utility taxes, business licenses and development fees. Um, and when uh, uh, when we take a look at the totality of these revenues and how they're growing over time, between twenty-five to twenty-thirty, they're growing on average at about three point nine percent. Uh, which is fairly reasonable, um, considering um, uh, what we're expecting for development revenues, what we're expecting for sales tax revenues, and then in particular, uh, the limitations that we, um, the uh, cities operate under for um, property taxes. So I'll pause here just for a second, council, um, see if you have any questions.
Any questions? Uh, not yet, Martin. Thank you very much.
All right. So let's turn our attention to general fund expenses. Um, so we covered revenues. Uh, we covered our growth in revenues. Excuse me. And these revenues are used to pay for the city services that um, uh, that the public has come to expect from the city. So let's compare the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Uh, so the city, again, for the listing public, uh, the city operates under a biennial budget. Um, the current binding ends, uh, or the two-year budget ends December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And the next biennial budget begins January first, twenty twenty-five. It goes through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Uh, so these two pie charts compare twenty-four months of spending for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget and twenty-four months of spending for the twenty-five, twenty-six expenditure forecasts. Uh, what we see here is we focus on the left graphic. Public safety expenses represents about forty percent of our um, expenditures. Uh, police, the police contract is worth about four point nine million. Uh, the east side fire and rescue contract is worth about two point nine million. And the public safety or the jail contract is worth about uh, one million. All other city services, this would include public works, finance, uh, community development, uh, the mayor's office, the council's office, um, human resources, et cetera. Um, that's what makes up this uh this remaining share of other city services, and this is worth about, as you can see, about eleven point two million dollars. When we compare a chart to the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, I'm forecasting that expenses for the next two years will total uh will be about uh almost six million dollars or five and a half million dollars more than what we're spending this year or this biennium. And you can see the increases. Uh, the police contract is increasing from uh four point nine million to eight point three million. Uh, the public safety um or the East Side Fire and Rescue contract is increasing from two point nine million to three point nine million. And the jail contract is increasing from about um uh one point nine uh one million to about one point three million. And other city services increasing by about um seven hundred thousand dollars.
Now, I do have a clarifying question. So by my math, Martin, that's a twenty-seven percent increase.
That's right. Yeah. Yeah, in fact, I have the percentage shown for you, uh, councilman, on the next slide here. Uh, so fire contract, again, two point nine, three point nine million, it increased up about a million dollars. That's thirty-five percent increase. Police, um, increase of three point four million, a seventy percent increase. Uh, the jail contract increasing by about three hundred thousand um or about thirty percent. So this is a little bit misleading, right, because the percentage here makes it appear that it's a fair large dollar amount, but the dollar increase is fairly minimal. Um, and then other city services increasing by about seven hundred thousand or um six percent. And again, these are preliminary numbers. Um, we're we are currently in negotiations with the city of Soqami uh for a uh updated contract. And we're hoping that through that negotiation, we'll be able to bring this number down down some. Um, for the East Side Fire and Rescue, um, uh, um, contract, uh, we are one of eight votes um uh on on the East Side Fire and Rescue Board. You know, our representatives, our representative is a council member, uh, got health. Uh, but again, he's just one of eight votes on that uh board. And I'm hoping that um through discussions uh through the board with East Side Fire and Rescue Administration, uh, that there'll be some some room where we can cut that back um some as well. So I'll pause here just for a second, uh, see if anyone has any questions.
Ms. Colin. So all of the public health and safety is going up by very large amounts, but the other city services really are not. And can you explain why that would be the case?
Sure. Um, so the dollar amount is not going, is not decreasing, but the percentage of the overall budget is decreasing. So what we're seeing here is the size of the pie is increasing, uh, councilwoman, right, from twenty million to twenty-five million. Uh, but the amount that we spend for other city ser- services, while while it's increasing to eleven point nine million, it's decreasing as a share of total expenses, and that's because uh public safety expenses are are increasing so much.
So does that mean our city will have to make cuts?
It, um, I do have a slide later on that talks about a strategy for closing this gap. Um, and expenditure cuts uh um maybe one area that we may need to look at, look at. I think uh tapping into our available reserves uh for the short term and growing our local economy. Um, again, i.e. sales taxes, um, uh, would be another strategy and then potentially increasing um taxes or tax rates in general uh to um uh infuse more revenues into uh the general fund would be uh would be the other option.
Uh, if I may, the other option, of course, is to cut service levels. I'm not suggesting that. I'm not in favor of that. We had a voice earlier from the public saying, oh, my goodness, the current, so let's evaluate what we're receiving for what we're paying already, and I that was not a voice saying we need lower service levels. But if you were, I mean, these numbers are staggering, and we face some real challenges here in this place, I think, into the conversation I'll be having here key uh coming up next as to what we are facing as a city. These costs, I believe, are uh, you know, to be negotiated with other bodies, uh, the 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 public safety fees. So uh, just another strategy. Thank you.
Anybody else from council? Brendan.
Taking the the actual numbers aside, Martin, when you look at the distribution with the categories that you've presented here for expenditures, in your opinion, when you look at other cities similar size, is this distribution pretty well consistent? Or is it differentiated from other communities?
I think that's a good question, Councilman. Um, I think the distribution that we see for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, this is this is moving um very quickly towards a public safety-focused community. Um, so when we think about other communities that have a a large public safety uh investment, um, Kent, Des Moines, Renton, um Tacoma, uh, where where public safety is uh is more of an issue. Um, this this twenty-five, twenty-six budget is moving towards that profile. Uh, where, as you can see here, you know, over fifty percent of our budget is um is spent on public safety uh services as opposed to about forty percent today.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Martin, in the the slide previous for local revenue forecast, is that three point nine percent evenly distributed across those years and categories? Or or it?
No, no, um, I'm growing each revenue source um uh um uh individually. So there's a there's a forecasted growth rate for each year and for each revenue source. So it's not an even three point nine percent for each year um uh for for every source.
Yeah, so so we could interpret that pulling a specific lever off those five options could allow us to fluctuate or increase the that those one way or the other, right?
That's that's correct. That's correct. So I'll give you an example, uh, councilman. Um, utility taxes, um, this green bar here represents the revenues that we derive, that we bring in from our six percent utility tax. Cities have the option of increasing that tax rate above six percent on the public utilities, uh, water, seawater, storm, solid waste. Uh, on the private utilities, uh, they are they are capped at six percent, and that would include natural gas, electricity, telephone. So there's uh as a revenue option, the city could look at increasing the you uh the public utility tax rate above that six percent. Um, I haven't calculated uh might might mean, uh, but that's certainly one of the options that we'll we'll explore. And along those lines, uh, utility taxes, when we compare our revenue profile to revenue profiles of other cities, particularly on the um um in Eastern Washington, um, Eastern Washington cities are highly dependent upon utility taxes. So when we take a look at their at their revenue profile, um, their utility taxes would chances are represent one of their largest revenue sources. Um, and then sales taxes and property taxes would be um uh lower, uh, getting reflecting the um the economies of of those cities in Eastern Washington. Um, also, as a um as context, uh, councilman, on utility taxes, uh, city of Seattle, uh, their utility taxes, I believe, are around twelve or thirteen percent. And for the city of Kent, uh, their utility taxes are around that thirteen to fifteen percent. And the city of Kent has um taken that one step further to earmark increases in the utility taxes towards specific services. So, for example, if the city were to save North Bend, we'd increase the utility tax from, let's say, six percent to, I'll make it up nine percent. Uh, we could say that the revenues from that marginal increase, that three percent, is earmarked exclusively for um public safety services. Property taxes is um is another lever that we could potentially pull. Um, again, this is uh based upon a one percent rate of growth each year um under state law. Uh, but cities can uh go to the voters and ask for what's called a levy lit lift. Uh, you probably saw several measures uh like that in the last election where voters um um throughout the region overwhelmingly approved a levy lit lift for public safety services. And that's that's an option where uh the city can go to the voters and say, um, you know, our revenues from property taxes at had a one percent growth isn't sufficient to pay for our services. Therefore, in combination with other strategies, um, um, or exclusively through property taxes, for example, uh, we would like to increase the property tax levy rate to a certain dollar amount. And revenues from that increase would be earmarked for um specific services. And in our case, that would be for public safety services.
Anybody else? Or move on? Here, here, Martin.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Well, thanks, Mayor. Uh, just a few more slides, council.
No problem.
So again, uh, we're moving towards this pie chart here where um over fifty percent of our uh budget will be spent on public safety. And as you can see, the increases here from the question that Councilmember Jocelyn asked about the increases uh by by the different categories. This graphic here uh focuses on the Soqami Police Contract and the East Side Fire and Rescue Contract. Um, again, um, this compares uh where we're at today. Um, and the forecast, again, as proposed, uh, for the next two years, and then uh my forecast going out uh for the remaining four years. And as you can see, for uh the uh police contract, um, varied about two point six million today. Um, they'll increase to about four point eight million by the end of twenty thirty. Um, the fire uh contract, about one point five million today, increasing to about one point eight million in twenty-five, and then increasing to about two point four million in uh by the year twenty thirty.
Hey, Martin, I have a question for you on that.
Yes.
Um, these particular values here on the increases, I just want to clarify, those aren't set yet. This is the very beginning of
That's
the negotiations. There's still a lot of discovery and due diligence that needs to occur. But this is just based on if we were to take the initial proposed increases from both of those agencies and factor them into what impact that would have on the city of North Bend. Is that correct? I just want to clarify that.
That's correct. So think of this as almost the worst-case scenario. Where where we've received the numbers from uh uh Soqami and from East Side Fire and Rescue. Uh, this represents what they've requested. Um, East Side Fire and Rescue has requested a two-year uh budget for twenty-five and twenty-six. Uh, Soqami Police has uh requested a one-year budget, which is twenty-five only. And then um in order for me to prepare a forecast for the outer years, um, I'm um attaching a uh a growth rate uh to those expenses for to uh for the outer years.
Tramwata.
Martin, do we know, uh, without putting you on the spot, do we know where those values lie in Western, in in the Puget Sound or Western Washington for cities our size?
Um, that's a good question. I have not done that research. That was something I was thinking I was thinking about. Um, the the best way to normalize these statistics across different jurisdictions is to compare them on a per capita basis, um, and how much spending uh there is on the uh per one thousand population. Uh, so my approach would be to take the police contract, the value of pu- of uh police services, for example, um, nor convert these numbers to a per one thousand population and then do a similar calculation for uh neighboring communities. Um, and that's really the best way of comparing uh statistics between jurisdictions.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be great.
Anything else?
Um, so again, let's talk about what this means for our general fund financial forecast. So when I showed this graph to you, council, about two months ago, you recall that I was forecasting that the ending fund balance uh would gradually decline and reach um targeted levels by about twenty thirty. Um, with the figures that um I just went over uh with you, uh, what we show is that the general fund fund balance would go negative in twenty twenty-seven and would fall below target in twenty twenty-six. Now, what that uh what that means in terms of the financial gap is when we compare those two lines, this, the value of that area between the two, these two lines, uh, the black line and the green line here is worth about twenty-six million dollars over the uh twenty-six through twenty-thirty planning period. Um, or equal, uh, just to put that in context, uh, is is equivalent to about a thirty percent. Um, it's it's equivalent to about thirty percent of our expenses. Um, so Councilmember Jocelyn, um, you know, answer your question, um, in terms of expenditure cuts. Um, you know, one way to balance it without raising revenues would be to look at expenditure cuts, but the cuts we would need to look at would be on in the order of magnitude of about thirty percent. Um, and uh for listening public, you know, we have about sixty employees citywide. Uh, thirty percent uh reduction, most of our expenses are in are in personnel. Uh, so we're looking at cutting um um staff by about uh twenty positions. Okay, um. In terms of policy options and uh councilwoman, this is um, maybe on point to the question, uh, 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 Councilwoman Colin, I think you asked us about options that we have. I created this whole graphic for you in terms of um short-term, midterm, and long-term options for closing this gap. Again, this is the gap that we're talking about. And potentially other options. Um, in the short term, um, as uh, um, as Brendan mentioned, you know, we can negotiate further with uh Soqami and East Side Fire and Rescue. Um. Another uh option is we could tap into our emergency reserves. Um, as you recall, uh, when Drew Botay was here with the city, um, I think it was around twenty twenty-three, he made the decision to uh move about one point one million dollars into funds zero zero two, which is our general fund emergency reserves fund. Um, I think um, I think certainly this is a uh, this is a uh a um an attractive option for us where this will buy us time essentially, right, to uh to bring in these reserves into our expenses uh so that we can address this initial gap in twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, the challenge with that, of course, is these are reserves, like just like our home savings accounts. Once we use it um and spend it down, then it's no longer there. So it's a one-time resource. So if we do want to use this, you know, we can certainly do so. Um, but we want to be strategic about, um, how do we wean ourselves off of using that one-time reserve, um, because we're simply just masking the challenges for the next two years by using reserves. Um, and then the second half of that conversation would be, what do we do in terms of restoring those reserves? Right? So again, using the home savings account analogy, now you're going to spend on your savings for a family vacation um or for a new new car, um, you you want to have a strategy for replenishing uh that savings account. In the mid to long term, um, continue growing the economy. You know, James is going to be discussing the uh Middle Fork um Development Agreement um after my presentation here. Uh, but that Middle Fork project is part of an overall economic development strategy for the city. Well, in terms of growing uh the economic base for the city, you know, this takes time, right? That's um, we go back here to our sales taxes. You know, it takes time to grow the economy. It takes time to grow the economy and, and it takes time for that, for that activity to present itself in terms of increased revenues to the city. So you know, absent, for example, a Costco locating in the, locating a new warehouse in the city, absent a major retailer like that, dropping a big box into the city. You know, we're going to grow, if we want to grow our revenues, then we need to grow our, our local economy. And whether that's through additional recreational opportunities, a, for example, an automobile mall or a big box retailer. You know, those, those different choices, those different retailers have different values in terms of how much they can contribute to the, to the city economy. A midterm strategy would be taking a look at our utility tax rate. Again, that's at six percent today and possibly increasing that, generating some level of new revenue for the city and doing that as soon as 2025. And then 2026 is considering a, a public safety levy left. And again, this is voter-approved. The reason why I have this council in 2026 is it takes time to prepare the public education campaign, right? We need to explain to citizens now, why, why do we need a levy left? And have we exhausted all other options to, to close this, to close this financial gap? And then Councilmember Jocelyn, cutting expenditures is a potential option as well. I, I'm like you, I don't, I wouldn't advocate for this. You know, we're a very small city. We're not a Kent or Seattle. So when we cut a position, it has an outsized impact on, on on city services. Right? So for example, like in the finance department, I only have one person that does business licensing. So if we were to cut that position, her duties would need to be covered by others within finance, as well as the, the remaining employees would need to, you know, continue carrying on the duties that they're currently assigned. So the, the team that we have is a very small team. So any, again, any cut to employee or positions would have, and I would expect it to, to be sold to have a outsized impact on public services.
Martin, just real quick.
Yes.
Thank you for putting all these ingredients in the strategic menu here. I would like to call out a really good salient point on the slide, which is none of these are mutually exclusive. One shouldn't read this as a flowchart, as this is what we're doing today. Short-term, long-term, mid-term, it's, we can, these are all levers that we can pull to get to whatever amount we need to get to, to get to. Would you, would you agree with that?
That's, that's correct. Thank you for bringing that up. So when we take a look back at this slide here, this financial gap that's worth $26 million over six years, in order to close this gap, it's going to require a, a combination of strategies. There's, there's not going to be one strategy that will be the magic bullet for the city. We're going to need to look hard at, at different, different strategies and and then ask that, ask those tough questions. What does, what does this mean to the city? Right? To taxes that people pay, to services that they receive? And how do we compare to, to similarly sized jurisdictions around us?
And then just a kind of a broader question. When thinking about this at the macro level, have, do you have any bearings on if this is a unique to North Bend scenario with our public health services suddenly increasing? I mean, there's been defund police movements out there, so there could be a lot of different anomalies or noise that can mess with that kind of analysis. But from a macro level, is this happening, if you, if you know, in Washington and throughout the US?
In Washington, yes. Throughout the US, I think it is a challenge. So I'll give you some anecdotes, Councilman. Cities of Sammamish and Issaquah are also partners with Eastside Fire and Rescue. You know, they're, they're the other two cities on the board for Eastside Fire and Rescue along with Fire District 10 and Fire District 38. The city of Issaquah is looking at budget cuts in '25, '26 to balance their budget. Now, they were already looking at budget cuts to manage their financial, financial situation. But when the Eastside Fire and Rescue came in with the proposed increases, that only exaggerated the issues that they're, that they're, that they're dealing with. What they're going to do, I, I don't know. City of Sammamish is looking at budget cuts. I forget if the city of Bellevue or Seattle, for example, are looking at budget cuts. Right? I think certainly with the tax structure that we have in Washington State, where property taxes can only grow at one percent per year. Excuse me. And as you recall, there was a movement by cities to the state legislature to increase that ceiling to three percent during the last let's say of session. And even though that request was made by the majority of municipalities in the city, I mean, in, in the state of Washington, that proposal was not, was not looked upon favorably by the state legislators. So cities are already kind of stuck with the tax tools that we have. And to you, Councilman, you know, these are, these are different levers that we have. Under the state constitution, cities in Washington State do not have the ability, the legal ability to create new taxes. Whereas in, for example, in Oregon, they do. So in Oregon, you know, you see cities creating a new utility tax, for example, to pay for parks and public safety and other city services. In Washington State, where we don't have that luxury and we're limited to the tools that are given to us by the state legislature.
Would, would that go so far as to extend to say, I'm just making this up, like a resort tax or hotels and things like that?
Yes.
That's beyond our authority.
That's right.
Because I do know some communities do something like that. Okay. Well, hopefully, we have somebody at this table that will be ending up in Olympia soon, so bear in mind these conversations. Thank you, Martin. Thank you for responding to me.
You're welcome. Good questions. So in terms of next steps, Council, between now and the end of October, I'm expecting that we will continue discussions with the Eastside Fire and Rescue and Snoqualmie Police. Hopefully, we're going to bring those numbers down that I showed you by, by some, I'm hoping. The second bullet is we
Yes. I am so sorry to interrupt, but I think it's an important point that actually we're negotiating with the city of Snoqualmie and the council and the mayor. We are not in negotiations with the Snoqualmie Police Department, per se. Is that correct?
That's correct.
We're not talking, I mean, Snoqualmie hires the police force and is in charge of them, and we then are negotiating to enter into a contract with the city of Snoqualmie that will be signed off on. And so it is challenging because their electeds are facing similar pressures. The costs are going up for many reasons that we're familiar with and don't need to go into. But yeah, I just think it's important to, to clarify that we're not actually in conversation with Chief Lynch or anybody, you know. It's, he's in service to us and we're thankful for that, but it's, it's the administration of Snoqualmie that North Bend will be interacting with in that regard.
That's correct. The second bullet is we are prompt for you, Council. Do you wish to have additional presentations or study sessions on the general fund budget and potential levers that we could look into? So anyway, that's a rhetorical question. If you would like to have the, these additional presentations or work-study sessions, I'd be happy to facilitate those.
Thank you, Martin, very much. Any additional comments? For Martin? Okay, looking like there's nothing at this point. We will now move on to the public hearing. Whoop, sorry. I think it, I think it was. Questions? Question? Nice. Questions? No. We appreciate all, everybody's time and all the effort here. That's for sure. Okay, we'll now move on to the public hearing. So public hearing on the 2025-2026 biennial budget is now open. If any members of the audience, that there be light, as they say, would like to comment during the public hearing, we would invite you to come forward to the podium at this time. If you have requested accommodation with a city clerk and wish to speak, please raise your hand through the virtual platform and we will take your comments after in-person comments. Please remember to state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to speak. Anybody? No? Okay, anybody online, Bree?
Yes, we have one virtual participant. Mike Thomas would like to speak.
Okay, Michael, you're on. No?
Mike Thomas here.
Hi, Mike.
Hello? You muted me. You muted me. You need to give me time.
We're, we're, we've got you.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, there's a problem here. When, when, when the host mutes the participants, it takes, it takes participants several seconds to unmute. Mike Thomas, 1231 La Forest Drive SE. Thank you, Mr. Chaw, for the excellent presentation. And I certainly appreciate this presentation. I've been following city work studies for the past, several of the past ones. And this, in fact, is a bit worse in terms of the burn rate, in terms of the expenditures exceeding revenues on the general fund than what was presented at work study. I advise citizens to go look at several of those work studies and also the, the annual meeting. So I do, I do appreciate the severity of this issue. I did have perhaps a couple of questions and perhaps Council can ask them at this or subsequent meetings. One, a tremendous number of city staff are involved in things like permitting, development review, et cetera. And one item that appears to have been missed is raising those type of fees, you know, for, you know, to pay for city staff. So I would put that forward as one idea is to help offset some of the city staff expenditures. And in fact, there was an item further called out is that the city was also anticipating, does the city still expect to need to maintain and raise things like stormwater impact fees, transportation impact fees, et cetera? It was called out in prior work studies. And again, it looks like utility rates are a component, but however, there's a lot of capital fees. So another question would be, you know, to what degree do we expect to see, you know, capital fees, like GFCs, stormwater fees, et cetera, increase and traffic impact fees increase? And it seems like to me there's also something utility rates increase. As utility rates were mentioned, as sales taxes were meant, increased utility taxes, you know, those represent a really fixed cost of living to residents in the city of North Bend. And we're hearing, you know, from, you know, from the earlier presentation on senior center, that folks are struggling with the cost of living. You know, raising utility taxes doesn't help here. Raising utility rates doesn't, doesn't help here. Another question I would have, and this was, this was raised by, in one of the prior work studies, was that there was concern over the city's bond rating and needing to raise, you know, things like stormwater impact fees and other capital facility fees. Does that remain true? And lastly, given I pay attention to water, and I know there wasn't much discussion around water rates or the Water Enterprise Fund, is that the development that would have been the National Guard, of course, isn't happening? And there's a proposal to move those two parcels to the SLAAL service area. To what degree were the revenues and capital, rate revenues and capital facilities revenues attached to this, that parcel being the city water service area? And what's the impact of moving it to SLAAL? This concludes my comment, and I know I'm hitting three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Bree, do we have anyone else online?
No one at this time.
Thank you very much. Anybody in the audience? Oh. Okay, Jason.
Jason Ritchie, 2801. Nope, that's not it. 2802, Southeast 16th Street. Just to touch on something I was mentioning earlier, I hadn't read the, the full packet on the, the budget. So going through the report, great information, think highlighted a point I was trying to make earlier. I just wanted to put a period on it. I think as the council thinks about all of the opportunities and ways to solve the, the revenue and cost concerns and issues, I think obviously sales tax is the largest source of, of contributor to revenue there. And I think as we think about putting land to use and things like that, I just ask that you guys try and think about long-term, given the caps on property taxes that you think about ways that we can continue to drive new and expansive sales tax opportunities, whether through TIFs or, or things like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Any one more check on anyone else online that I might have missed?
No one at this time, Your Honor.
Okay. The public hearing on the 2025-2026 biennial budget is now closed. Moving on to item number 11, AB 24-087, Resolution Authorizing Development Agreement with Middle Fork Property Development LLC. Mr. Henderson, would you please provide the report for us tonight?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor and Councilmembers. The development agreement has been requested by the Middle Fork Property Development LLC to support the purchase of the property from Puget Western, located in East-North Bend in an area commonly known as Truck Town. The development opportunity is an opportunity to catalyze the development of a vacant parcel in East-North Bend that will generate both value, valuable property, property sales, pardon me, and BNO tax for, for the city to maintain essential services. The development of the property will also bring employment opportunities, provide new customers to existing and future businesses, and attract new business amenities to serve current and future North Bend residents. In the development agreement, the applicant is requesting traffic and stormwater impact fee credit of fifty percent for five years, once the contract has been executed. Fifty percent of the traffic and stormwater impact fees will be collected prior to a building permit issuance. The remaining fifty percent of traffic and stormwater impact fees will be paid back with sales tax generated from the businesses at the property within five years of the execution of the development agreement. If the sales tax does not cover the impact fee credit in five years, the developer would pay the balance of the fee. In addition, the applicant, the applicant is seeking an opportunity to have Salal Water Association provide water to the site. Currently, the site is in North Bend's water service territory. This provides the developer flexibility in choosing their water purveyor to develop the property based on their development timeline and needs. Duration of the development agreement is for 20 years. However, the DA does have major milestones, milestones that serve as incentive to develop the property and must be met to keep the DA in force. These include essentially providing a master plan for the site. The property is currently zone EP2, EP2, and is part of the East-North Bend overlay master plan. The DA requires a master plan for the property to be submitted within six months of the contract's execution. And as you know, once the overlay has been submitted, it will then go through Planning Commission, Economic Development Committee, and then finally before Council for consideration. And finally, a billing permit must be submitted within two years of execution of the contract. These are all meant to keep basically the DA in force, but also to make sure that the property is put into productive uses and the city can realize a financial gain from it. Some of the financial benefits for, for the development agreement, as you all know, we recently completed the fiscal sustainability study, which basically identified this property as a high Which basically identified this property as a high priority for development because it would bring uh net commercial development to the city and a net positive impact as well. Uh, based on the FCS report uh from that analysis, it's estimated that the full development of the property. Will generate up to seventy thousand dollar annually in property taxes for North Bend, an increase of sixty three thousand dollars from the current uh property that we, that, that North Bend receives. Uh, the EPT zoning allows for manufacturing, professional and research and development uses that provide for good paying jobs and opportunities for local residents. These types of jobs would have a multiplier effect as employees spend money in the city for housing, food, gas, and other needs as well. In addition, the development would also benefit the city's tax increment finance application, which again is a strategy that came out of the FCS report. By having a willing developer for the site. Uh, and finally, uh, the DA supports uh North Bend's brand and alignment, uh basically to provide economic viability and a balanced budget. Development of the property would create high paying employment opportunities within the city of North Bend. And in addition, with the development agreement, would create a better balance between residential and employment, as well as bring more tax revenue to support vital city services. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson, for that report. Council, do you have any questions for Mr. Henderson? Mr. Johnson?
Could you speak to any sense of urgency around this action, please?
Yes, the uh, the applicant is currently in negotiations with Pugil Western, and they have a very limited time, I believe, is a hundred and twenty days from when we met them. In the beginning of uh July to close on the property, and thus this has been kind of moving at a smart pace uh through our process, first to Plan Commission. Then the Community Economic Development Council, and now before full council for consideration.
Uh, thank you. I've got a couple more. Um, I, I want to clarify that impact fees are a one-time fee paid once. And that the five years that's mentioned in the DA is simply a time window during which. That opportunity to, the, the, the contractual arrangement to have them reduced potentially is in, is in play.
Yeah, that's correct.
All right. And um, there was some conversation around uh the developer themselves and whether or not they're licensed in the state of Washington. Are you, will, are you able to speak to that?
Yeah, the, even though it's between uh, it could be between the city of North Bend and Middle Fork Property Development LLC. Uh, the corporation behind it, Seattle Development Corporation, and both Seattle Development Corporation, CCon LLC. And Middle Fork Property Development are licensed in the state of Washington.
Thank you.
Any, any arrow?
So James, this is a development agreement. This is not a planning document. Can you just reiterate that and explain the master plan overlay that accompanies the site?
Yeah, thank you very much for that. So this is a development agreement to help really kind of put in place the mechanisms to help uh the Millport Development acquire the property from Pugil Western. They have to acquire the property uh first from Pugil Western because they are under a time constraint for it. The master plan overlay, the overlay, the master plan that will come before the city takes longer to develop. And so we're kind of doing this slightly in reverse, uh because the master plan takes longer to put together than the hundred and twenty to close on the, on the land, basically. So again, that master plan is part of the condition of development agreement. They have to provide to us within six months.
Right.
Anybody else? Uh, yeah, Brennan? Mm-hmm, you're welcome.
Um, is this particular developer agreement, is it transferable to a new owner? So for example, we pass it tonight. Um, for the folks that are involved, how does it impact any other future uh interested parties?
Yeah, so if, if, if it is transferred, I mean, it is a limited, it's a twenty year development agreement, but really sort of the, the financial elements only last for five years. Uh, potentially could be transferred to a new developer. We'd have to negotiate that with the new developer and see if they would want to take that on.
So then to expand on that, approving this, let me rephrase this. There will be another point in time where whatever's going to be built there will come back through this council for council to be able to determine whether that, that, that can be built. Is that correct?
Yeah, there will be a master plan that will be submitted that will show essentially renderings of what will take place on the property, uh traffic ingress and egress. And other elements for us to kind of understand the potential uses that would be at the property. And then that would be presented again to Planning Commission, Community Economic Development Committee, and then the full council.
When thinking about the impact fees, do we have an estimate or a bearing on how much those impact fees would be in total and how much the deferment would be?
Uh, we don't have a figure at that time. It largely depends on the type of development that goes into that area. So we could. I think once we have the master plan, we'd have a better idea of what those figures would be.
And then in the introduction, it mentioned very specific number about six hundred jobs. How is that derived?
That is essentially derived from the F, uh, the fiscal sustainability study that was done, uh, just recently completed. So that's basically taking out what could be potentially developed on the site, given the current zoning of EP two. So that's looking at like white industrial, manufacturing, those type of uses. And then based on the size of the property, coming up with an estimated uh job creation target.
Okay, and I thought I had one more, one second.
Yep, that's fine. More?
That's all for now. I think the rest of my questions will come in discussion. Thank you, James.
Good luck.
I had a clarifying question on councilman Elwood. So he referenced coming back to council for approval. To be clear. If it's a buy right development by the zoning and the master plan. Council won't be deciding what is built there, correct? Unless it's outside of that requirement, or what's the zone there?
Yeah, the current overlay uh in place, the East North Bend overlay, requires a master plan to be brought forward to kind of show basically. How uh the traffic impact system will flow there, where the buildings will be located, that type of thing. If it stays within the current EPT, EP two zoning. That is allowable under, under, you know, hundred.
I just wanted to make sure, clarifying on it. Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, that's okay. Anybody else from, uh, Mr. Henry?
Yeah, can, can you further clarify the impact credit fee offset? Because I, I'm trying to, I don't know, you give fifty percent and then based upon what they bring in sales path. That awesome. So during that period of time, if they're spending the odd set of, that revenue is to offset it, it's not additional sales tax.
Yeah, during the five-year period that the development agreement is effect for that tax credit, it's meant to offset the impact fees through, through a payment of sales tax back to the city. Now, if the sales tax does not equal the impact fee total, then the applicant would basically write a check to the city to make up the difference.
But during that, clarify, during that five-year plan, it would not help the city if you wouldn't, you getting, you, you sales actually be effectively put towards covering their.
Impact fees, correct. But this is the impact fees for traffic and stormwater.
Thank you. Mr. Galt, Mr. Johnson?
Oh. I want to make sure if, I, I shouldn't speak until anyone else had an opportunity, but.
Ladies.
Um. It, it, there's no conversation around the city acquiring this parcel, is that, I mean, based on our budget, we're, we don't have money to buy a thirty-five acre parcel on these set of town. And if this opportunity is not acted on, and this interested party moves on, what then, what path are we on then?
Well, at that point, uh, we'll have to wait for another developer who may be interested in, in buying the parcel. It's uh, it's currently owned by Pugil Western, and they tend to move more slowly on these types of things. So this is an opportunity for us to really, I think, you know, have a meaningful impact right now. Um, there's been some discussion about the National Guard. They are no longer going to that site. So the, the fact that this uh developer has come forward is really kind of a great opportunity for us to kind of strike. Uh, when the iron is hot, so to speak, and potentially put in a good development there.
Mr. Rustic. Do we have any idea what the master plan is going to look like?
Not, not at this point. Again, for the DA, they have to provide to us within six months.
Yep. Okay, everybody, okay, Brennan?
Yes, I thank you for that clarification, Arrow. Um, to that end. I don't know, I can't recall, I should say, uh, everything that is uh allowed uh in that zoning. The elephant in the room is the large group of people here. All the emails that we've been getting is an auto mall acceptable use for that zoning? I'm sorry, James?
Yeah, under current EPT, EP two zoning, uh, vehicle and truck sales and services are allowed use.
And is it acceptable, maybe this is more of a comment for legal, um, for the city to. Take another step at possibly rezoning certain areas that may not align with our vision?
Sorry, council member, can you rephrase that? I'm not sure I understand.
You bet. So currently we have zoning that allows something that perhaps, and we still need to have a, a council work session or work study on this to understand what our vision is. And what sort of uses we want to see within current zoning. That zoning was uh created a long time ago. Is, is it within the uh authority of this body? Um, to move forward to uh rezone certain areas, to restrict certain type of uses for those zoning areas? For example, being very explicit. Striking out the ability to have an auto mall there.
So I, a site-specific rezone, it sounds like might be the nature of your question, which is not before the council at this time.
Correct.
And there would be a very different process for that, that is not being contemplated tonight.
I understand that, but is that something that this council could take up, should it so desire? Would, would we be violating law if the council decided, oh, wow, here's a piece of land that somebody wants, but you know what? The city doesn't want this type of thing built there. Is it within our power to revisit rezoning and possibly strike certain uses from that land?
Well, given the nature of your question, council member, I'm, the answer is no, generally speaking. However, there are rezoning processes. That may come before the council or the Planning Commission at a later time. But a specific proposal that the city council then acts upon to have a site-specific rezone is not before the council, and also would not be advisable.
I hear you. We've had precedent with tattoo parlors and things like that that have come before the council, and so there's been some interesting things. Um, thank you, thank you for that. I have one other question for you, James. Go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, um, can you tell us what spot zoning is, Kendra?
I will defer that to your planning department.
That would be James?
Yeah. Yeah. He's like. Calling you out.
Yeah, I'm being, being put on the spot here. Uh, so I will defer to David. I think he probably has more.
It's, it's a zone that is unique and different from other zones around it, or it's an attempt to take a specific. Part of a larger zoned area and zone it differently. Um, one of the things that hasn't come up in this conversation, but you all have studied it recently, is the use of the tax increment zone along with this. And since the land is undeveloped, the tax increment capture potential is fairly good. The other answer to a question that, that a council member, Galt, asked is. Would, would that tax do us any good if it were being used for our impact fees? If the impact fees are paid off within that term, and that depends on. How viable the tax resources are from that. And you just had a presentation by the, the um. Uh, Finance Director, i- if those taxes are paid off, of course, they would then be able to come directly to us and they, and they wouldn't uh. Uh, be assisting the developers. The, the elephant in the room here really is. How easy is it to develop and add restaurants or services in our community? We're, we're out on the edge of the urban area. Um, we have some real impediments to development here, and that's why these kinds of uh incentives through a development agreement are offered. And they're, they're part of many choices that you saw tonight. But this is one that we think combined with the tax increment district could help you in the future to be able to afford the things that. We need like public safety, like parks, like paving streets, like our aggressive uh trail program. You, you only do so much with, with um your, uh, with, with your grantsmanship, and your grantsmanship requires that you have local funds met to match. So we're trying to look at packages that make sense to bring to you, and, and we think this is one. We would have this analyzed by an independent financial consultant. To answer some of your questions once we get a master plan in. And find out how much money is coming and how quickly would it get paid off. Those are good questions, and we should look at that, and we should bring that to you.
Mr. Miller, um, okay, Heather.
I, as a baby council member, five years ago, brought up rezoning areas. That I thought would be better zoned in other ways, and I got slammed down, and they brought up. Property owners that bought those properties thirty, forty, fifty years ago, and that they are anticipating the zoning that we have already planned. That's all I have to say. I've tried to bring up rezoning multiple times, and it's very, very difficult.
Mr. Tremmata.
I have a clarifying question from councilmember Elwood. So the auto mall falls within EP two, James, I believe you said.
That's correct.
Do you, are you aware how long EP two has, how, how long this parcel has held that EP two zoning?
I, I do not know. I mean.
Maybe.
The uh, I, I got to talk to some of the original property owners on this and the western property. In the city that we're, Panatoni's proposing on. And both of those were zoned in nineteen eighty-eight. Uh, as uh EP, EP two zoning. And they've remained that way ever since. And the reason they haven't developed is a lot of them didn't have services to them, didn't have sewer to them, didn't have water to them. You remember Yulid Number Six brought sewer out to this area. Um, we're still working on the water issue, and that's why. They would like to take advantage of Salal, even with the high price of water hookup, and that's part of the reason they're looking for a deal from us. Because the water fees under their situation are two and a half times ours. The margins are thin on revenue-producing land uses. They're not on housing. That's elastic. They can absorb these.
So to, so to be clear, this council has had since nineteen eighty-eight to consider a rezone, and has not, and it's remained EP two since nineteen eighty-eight.
Correct.
Thanks.
Uh, Mr. Elwood?
James, I remembered my other question. Um, unless I miss it, did this go through Planning Commission?
Yeah, so it both went through Planning Commission and Community Economic Development Council.
And then, and then one final point on the decision being made tonight. It does not guarantee that an auto mall will go in on that spot, correct?
No. No, it, it, auto mall is, a vehicle, sales and service isn't allowed use. A permitted use in EPT two, but it does not mean that would necessarily happen.
Thank you.
Miss anybody else? Okay, okay. If any members of the audience would like to comment on this agenda item, we would invite you to come forward to the podium at this time. If you have requested accommodation with the city clerk and wish to speak, please raise your hand by the virtual fat platform. And we will take your comments after in-person comments. Please remember to state your name, your address. Uh, if you live in the city or unincorporated, be very nice to know. And for the record, and uh you got three minutes to speak. And I see you, Jean, come on up.
Thank you. Jean Buckner, four six two two six, Southeast One Thirty-Ninth Place. And um I had a conversation with the broker of this property. A week before last, and was told that uh he's very anxious to sell it, and that if this particular deal goes. Away, that he would very much entertain a proposal from a group of environmental groups that want to purchase the land. Uh, I also want to note that in the development agreement, there are two inaccuracies, and correct me if I'm wrong. But in the, on the first page, it basically says that the uh Middle Fork Property Development Company LLC owns the land. They don't. Puget Western owns the land. Um, it also, according to the Washington State Department of um Secretary of State. Uh, Middle Fork Development Property does not have a business license in the state of Washington unless that's been corrupted. I do understand that they listed Seattle Commercial Development as a proponent backing them up. But a proponent, to my knowledge, does not absorb any legal liability for a deal. So the. Parent company may have a license, but they are not legally obligated. Uh, next. I, I, if you folks sign off on this tonight. Once that master plan comes, my guess is if it fits the EP two and all of the code, et cetera. You don't have the right then, at that point in time, to say no to anything they propose that fits. With the EP two and or what uh has been agreed to. In terms of what's been agreed to, I'm afraid we're really giving away too much revenue. Um, and I believe Michael Thomas is going to comment on this further, but these kinds of deals, we're not. In such a bad situation. There are organizations and companies that are interested in. In such a bad situation. There are organizations and companies that are interested in North Bend. So I don't buy that we have to buy our way into these deals. To me, what we're giving up is. Not appropriate for what we're getting back in return. So I think Michael's going to go into that more later. My my last plea is why rush to evoke tonight? This hundred and twenty days, when that's over. This developer could go back to Puget Western, say, hey, give me another hundred and twenty. Or Puget Western could entertain other proposals. It's not something you guys have to do tonight. There are issues and problems with this developer agreement that I would request. That you folks take a very long and hard look at that development agreement. And it's a black box. There's nothing. In there. We don't know what it is. Please don't sign up off on a black box. Thank you.
Martin Vulcan, nine oh nine Northeast Sixth Street. I also, I'm not in favor of. Our site. Voting for this development tonight, this development agreement. It may be, maybe. A needed development. But in my mind, it's in the wrong place. And it's certainly in the wrong order. Because I think you guys are entertaining a very serious development agreement. Without really knowing. What you're agreeing to. And. And I think that has been elaborated on in terms of like when the master plan has to come. They're getting a deal. But you guys don't know what is actually being developed. And and I assume it has something to do with like the financial pressure that you're under right now. But. In terms of like the wrong place. I would like to speak to. It's not just Middle Fork Development. To me, it's the middle fork of the Snoke Miami River. And a wild and scenic river designation gets attained through a congressional act. And such rivers flow clean and unimpeded in a natural state. And offer extraordinary natural, cultural, or recreational values. So Washington State has seventy thousand miles. Of like waterways and riverways. And a whopping hundred and ninety seven miles of those. Have achieved that designation. Fifty of those hundred seven. Seven ninety seven miles. Are over there in the Middle Fork Valley. It's hard to sort of like wrap your head around those numbers. It's but but it amounts to point three percent of the waterways. I I I'm only saying this to so like illustrate what kind of a gem that is back here. Sort of as I was waiting here. I was kind of going Rain Man on the these floor tiles and there's probably about a thousand of these floor tiles in there. And it would be the equivalent. Of. Having three of those floor tiles. That are protected. And those are all back there. And it's the Snoke Miami, Middle Fork of the Snoke Miami River. And the Pratt River. And those are our home waters. And when I labored around on the brand audit for North Bend, the enhancement and celebration of our exceptional surroundings. Was obvious and it was agreed upon and voted on by this city council. So I understand that good development is hard to come by. But. I feel like such an ambiguous. Development agreement is not it. It seems unimaginative.
You'll have to wrap it up. I apologize.
I appreciate that, Mary. So my last sentence is, I would love to see this land being used for a nice entry into the. Into the Middle Fork and something that further shows that we can be the city that we promised we were going to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Anybody else? Come on up.
Jody Lockso, four, five, zero, Northeast Fourth Street, lived here like almost thirty years now. Never been to one of these meetings. And I would just. Like to say that I. Would be disappointed to learn that my representatives would vote for something. That they know so little about, unless you all know a lot more than I do because. The good jobs and the amenities and the essential services that might come our way from this are just, what are they? If you know, I'd love to hear more, but devote. To sell this land or to agree to the sale seems premature and rushed. That's all. Thank you.
Jody.
I'm Zee Martin, one, three, seven, one, nine, four hundred and sixty first place Southeast. I've lived here now for twenty five years, moved up from Merceran, which was a very well developed city. I was a school teacher. Mountside. Twin Falls, special ed. I would hate. I would not make, and I'm retiring on a fixed income. I would not make a decision personally if I knew what. We seem to know about this, which is very little. I would not rush a decision. I would wait. There's always another time to make a decision like this. We do not have to be. Hurried by their time limit. We can do our time limit also. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Bob Power, one, six, five, Northeast Juniper, Issaquah. And I have to start by coming clean. My partner and I. Are at pursues and we're going to have to recognize ourselves as senior citizens. Be that as it may. You're correct, CCON. Rob and I have both been there for forty years. We're a local contractor and developer. We first activity in North Bend, I think, goes back eighteen years, twenty years plus or minus. We did the ULID to get the sewer system put in and and did the infrastructure development on the. Shopping center that Safeway's in. We are the contractor and developer of the Terex project. And recently constructed the King County Loop facility for King County. So we're familiar with your city. The other component I'd leave you with is that. We keep what we build. We try and do quality projects. So I can't speak to what anybody else would do, but we take pride in what we do. We're local. Most of our work is. On the east side, Redmond, Issaquah, et cetera. We're not asking for any changes in allowable uses. We currently have no plans for an auto mall. We we were talking to an auto dealer. I still don't have an update from them of what we're doing. The reason we can't do a master plan is we haven't identified users yet. That's one of the. Problems you face in today's economy is. With interest rates, what they are and the cost of construction, it's hard to find the right mix to come together. We've worked with municipalities before. We redeveloped the King County landfill in Seattle. Rob used to have hair when we did it. He worked with Department of Natural Resources with King County. And City of Seattle to get a project through. Which was amazing. We did a development agreement recently in the city of Issquan, ended up constructing a medical building down there. And our timeline, yes, we are currently in a feasibility period right now with Puget Western. They have a, they set their timelines. They're a privately owned company. Offset of Puget Sound Energy. They promote from a foreign board of local closing. And in order to accommodate them and put the deal together the way we did, we have to waive contingency. By October fifteenth and a closing, I think of November thirtieth. Close to that. And if it doesn't work and the DA doesn't work and we don't do it. I have a feeling you'll be back here having the same conversation next year. So.
Thank you, Bob. Anybody else? Kathy, welcome.
Kathy Golic, one, three, seven, oh, five, four and Sixtieth Court, Southeast North Bend. I'm really here because my husband couldn't be here and he has been involved writing letters and I joined on. And I am listening to the first two, especially giving some that have clearly done a lot more studying on this. I really respect their opinions a ton, those two that spoke, because I know how involved in much homework they do. That being said, it seems like this does seem like a rush situation. And anytime there's a high pressure situation like this, you know, you go back, what do you tell your kids? You don't, you tell them to think. Think about it and don't make rush decisions because you don't want to make a mistake. And I think also we think about being creative and figuring out. Other ways to to get to the same point. Someone that brought up to me was that maybe we can get revenue by. Rejuvenating the outlet mall. And making that a place that I've been here thirty years too, and that used to be a place that people loved to come to. They would go to the outlet mall and if you can get sales revenue increased by improving what happens at the outlet mall. Then we wouldn't be feeling maybe this sort of sense of desperation, which is what this feels like, kind of a desperation decision, which doesn't usually end up. Being great. And the main thing that my husband wanted to point out was the water issue, like. That was such a huge issue for the councils and or for our Salau and North Bend water. That was a huge debate. So when you have something that's sort of unknown and you think, well, how's that going to impact water issues again? And then we'll be right back in the same boat we were before with water difficulties. So I just wanted to bring up those points and thank you for tonight.
Anybody else? Jason.
Me again. I'm probably not going to get applause. I. I just wanted to make a note on. The perspective of the council and I think Brendan did a good job. Asking some of these questions. If the property is. Zoned as it's zoned and there is not a a plan or a mechanism to rezone it. I would just encourage council to think through their role in. This process, which is really about, as I would see it. Offsetting fees and the. The the offsetting costs to encourage revenue in the future. And whether that is a good idea or not is is. Is to me is more of the. What's at, what's it, that the heart of it is whether or not we should be. Giving up revenue to get revenue, not what goes on the lot. Because it's zoned as it's zoned and somebody wants to to buy it, right? And so that's kind of my. My two cents on that is based on the financial projections and based on whatever. What you guys have seen in the data. Is hopefully the data, the decision can be made based on whether it is a good financial decision or not.
Good, Jason.
Kathy. Coming back, I meant to ask also, like, is there, is there, maybe it's already been done, but have we? Done something like when you do indeed, like I am a physical therapist.
Sorry, I have to cut you off. You, once you come.
Oh, you can't do it again. Well, I had a question. Just wondering if they've already marketed to see who might be interested in our plot. So we may not be allowed to ask questions, but that's my question. You can ponder it.
Thank you again. Anybody else?
No, 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 can I speak again? Okay, yeah, back to my point earlier. I was just curious how.
Can I stop you just for the clarity, your name?
Oh, yeah. Okay, Peter Nissen, four, six, two, two, five, Southeast one fortieth. I live in one of the four properties that juts into the EP two zone. They were previously developed as residential. They're large lots, so I'm very familiar with that lot. I've been in it many times and I just. I have, it's a beautiful piece of land. If you go out into the middle, the spot we're talking about, there's almost three hundred and sixty degree views of of mountains. So in addition to what Martin was saying earlier. As a gateway to an incredibly beautiful valley. That piece of property in and of itself is a beautiful piece of property. And I was wondering how many of the people that are voting on this have stood out. In that field. So not everybody that's voting on it. Because I think. You know. How how many people have? Okay, all right, well. Okay. Yeah, I think possibly, you know, you might not be fully appreciating the value of that land. And I, you know, I appreciate you need to 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 get more revenue. But it seems like. Approving something that we don't even know what it is yet. And we don't know how much revenue that's going to bring. You know, there could be a huge possibility that you could get a lot more revenue. Finding someone to develop it. For people that would appreciate the beauty of it. Rather than light industrial. So that's all I have to say.
Sir.
Gina. Gina Vulcan, nine oh nine Northeast Sixth Street. I'm just going to say, please don't do it. It's. I don't know if there's precedence for this, but it 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 seems crazy to me that you would. Allow something where we have no idea what is going to be there. I don't, I I can't wrap my brain around that, so. Can't we take pause and take a moment and and if there's any way of rezoning? Sounds like that needs to happen in this spot. No offense. It it sounds like a great idea. Somewhere else, out by the freeway. I don't know, by the outlet mall. But. At the. Entrance to the Middle Fork Valley. I don't. I I like what Jean said. There could be environmental groups. There could be so many other opportunities to. Do something wonderful with that land to celebrate. Our our beautiful place, so. Please don't do it. Thanks.
Gina.
Hi there. Yona Himka, four, seven, five, two, seven, Southeast one thirty seventh street. As a thirty plus year resident of North Bend, I've just seen the character of North Bend change so dramatically. And I encourage you to please not approve such a drastic. Plan. So quickly. And I've heard many times here tonight, the tax base. And I'm going to echo Kathy that we seem to have a gold mine here that really is underutilized. And it's the outlet mall and it just seems like it's fallen in such disrepair. Over these last few couple of decades and I'm just not sure why that is not, or maybe you guys do have a plan for it, but. I'm not sure why that's not being utilized. When we want to, you're talking about building something else for revenue. That seems. A wonderful place. So, thank you.
Good evening.
Evening. Adie Shown, one, seventy, two, fifteen, four hundred and thirty second. I think. One thing I've learned in in my work, I work as a mountain guide, I work in the avalanche mitigation industry, mountain construction. I work with a lot of teams and crews who work in really high stakes environments, like getting. Roadways like I ninety open for the economy to run. Something as like benign as a ski area open to get people out skiing safely, right? Trained with. You know, the guys who train our special forces in in mountain warfare. The biggest lesson I've learned is when you have. A problem in a situation like this. Slow it down. Even when it seems like it's urgent, need to rush and I'm like, I'm talking from a context where like things do need to happen quickly and you have to take action. But in a situation like this, like we don't have all the. But in a situation like this, like we don't have all the information, so to like agree to this deal just seems to me desperate, to be frank. And Dave, you had a comment earlier about like how we're kind on the edge of, you know, this urban corridor and things like restaurants and more, you know, kind of less industrial development is is harder to to sell. But like, have you been to South Fork on a Sunday? It's like in the middle of nowhere and it was nothing prior to me moving here now, like I drive past it every day and the parking lot is beyond capacity. And it like going up like to to Snow Call Me Summit, like the place is packed. So my point being like, we have such a beautiful valuable resource here. And currently with the way it's zoned, like, yes, maybe it's inevitable that it becomes something that that a lot of people in this town don't want to see. But if it's gonna go that way, if we can't change zoning, and I don't know if that's an option, but if it's going to go that way, at least would really want to see that done with like the most information possible and not this kind of like rushed, seemingly urgent deal. Like if if someone wants to buy that property, like it's worth enough, like they can wait and find a way to do it. Thanks.
Hey, I'm Will Russick, eight, six, oh, two, three, seventy eighth Avenue Southeast. When I heard about this meeting tonight from Martin, I went and looked up the DA and was pretty confused because it was so light on details and had so little information in it that I thought that it couldn't be right, like I was missing something. But turns out there's just not that much information. And the fact y'all are gonna do something that you don't actually know what you're, you're you're going to commit something, you don't actually know what you're permitting seems to be just a disservice to the community. So I would echo the other voices here about thinking critically about what that space means to the city and how it could be used best for our community. Thanks.
Sir. Anybody else? Thank you, sir.
I uh, I grew up in Oregon. When I graduated college, I hiked the Pacific Crest Trail all the way from Mexico to Canada. That was in twenty fourteen. I moved to Washington soon thereafter because how beautiful place this is, more so than Oregon where I grew up. And then I moved to the Snoqualmie Valley a couple of years later as I grew to you know, not just in my career, but also in, you know, what I value. And I think that there's a lot of young people here. I don't, I don't think I'm a senior, but maybe I'm not that young anymore. But a lot of my friends and I have moved out here through the years and you know, I, yeah, I just feel like it's a very special place. And I think a lot of us, you know, some of us are here, but a lot of us aren't, would be, you know, a little bit disappointed if this went through quickly. And back to the PCT point, Pacific Crest Trail, yeah, I just, I made this place home because, you know, out of those twenty six hundred miles and all those towns I stopped in and picked up groceries and people I met. This place stood out in conjunction with the natural beauty. But also in conjunction with the economic opportunity for myself and for my friends and everything like that. And so I understand that there's a balance that needs to be achieved, but you know, like everyone else is saying, you know, I think pressure tactics sometimes weasel their way in. I work, I worked in commercial construction for ten years. I've also worked in manufacturing and industrial too. And I I do have to balance, you know, my personal recreation passions, hobbies with, you know, my own economic viability and things like that. But yeah, I think Eddie had it right, slow down, fast is sometimes slow is fast, slow is safe. And Martin speaking about the, you know, wild and scenic nature of Snoqualmie, the fork is of paramount importance. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Have I gotten, forgotten anybody out there? Michael. Haven't forgotten Michael.
Uh, yes, we do have one virtual participant, that would be Mike Thomas.
Evening, council, can you hear me? Mike Thomas, Mike Thomas, twelve thirty one La Forest Drive SE. Wow, what a, what a great set of of comments about about this DA. I almost don't know what to say as the person who may have the last word on this. I too am, you know, with the rest of the community in saying that there really is insufficient information about this development proposal to to commit this on this path and this particular concession in reduction in fees. I I really don't see how the city can even assess the financial impact of the reduction in in traffic impact fees. You don't even know what the development is. Stormwater similarly, you know, it's kind of a open question, how many equivalent residential units of stormwater impact is this? So what kind of financial hole are we digging for stormwater and traffic? Because counting sales tax, well, you just can't use that sales tax that you would have, you need to pay for traffic or stormwater fees. Traffic is already a problem out there. And I'm very concerned, as I read something, NBMC seventeen thirty eight oh forty allows for a fifty seven percent reduction in traffic impact fees for EP zone. If I'm not mistaken, and maybe staff or city attorney can correct me on that. So I mean, are we, you know, taking a hit of eighty percent reduction in traffic fees for something that could have tremendous traffic out there? This is a great way to really ruin your gateway to the Middle Fork, you know, conservation area. And many people, you know, have said, whether it's Martin and others, have said the incredible asset that we have at the, with that being the gateway. Is this what we want to bookend our town with? And actually, I think in listening to counter proposals, you know, and observing what's going on at exit thirty two. Now thirty two is becoming sort of the gateway to SPU's, you know, Rattlesnake Lake and the Cedar Watershed and a bunch of trails there. Is the vision of, you know, exit thirty four, you know, with a indoor and outdoor, you know, recreation? The ranger station relocating there, perhaps the Snoqualmie Museum, open space for the elk. Elk and with some light retail and dining, a vision of how to tie exit thirty four to the rest of the community and create that gateway that we really want. How do we, how do we create that that bind the eastern side of the city to the rest of the city, which I know has come up? So I really would would hope that council would pause on this development agreement tonight and get more detail and hear more from citizens and alternative proposals. And again, I am honored to be part of North Bend and hear my fellow citizens express their love of nature. And certainly it's what have brought me out here and I really have, you know, enjoyed my ten years being here. And please, I would hope that you would give this strong consideration, get more detail, listen to other proposals, listen to what their citizens and others may come up with as an idea here. Thank you, and this concludes my comment.
Thank, thank you, Michael. I think that's it. Oh, well, yeah, one more.
Good evening.
Do this right, I'm Pam Wiseman, I live at one three seven, one, three, four, sixtieth Court Southeast. And I have a couple of things, one, I think this is going way too fast. And then earlier, when you were talking about the financial stuff, he mentioned continuing to grow city economy and he mentioned this auto mall. So but again, nobody knows what the auto mall is. We just bought our car, I'm sorry, we bought our daughter a car in Marysville. And there's a huge auto mall, but there's no resources around it. You sit in the lobby of the auto mall. So I don't know what kind of design. That would be interesting to find out how they're going to build it and how to include the community. And that's basically it. But like I said, it's just one big car lot. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, you ready? Council member Jocelyn, will you please make the motion?
I move to approve AB two, four, zero, eight, seven, a resolution authorizing a development agreement between the City of North Bend and Middle Fork Property Development LLC.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Jocelyn, seconded by Mr. Tremolot. Mr. Jocelyn, would you have any comments to make?
It's been a long night. I too cannot be more what's the word, pleased or engaged or it's wonderful to have this level of engagement. This is a a tough one. I want to point out that that, well, a couple of things. I think it's real important to be as clear as possible about what it is that's before us tonight and what it commits us to. It's, there's, let's see. We're very fortunate, I believe, to have James Henderson as our Economic Development Manager. He's incredibly respected in the field. I won't go into his background, but it's remarkable. The city is a city and we have obligations to to meet service levels and provide a quality of life. And boy, are we ever lucky, aren't we, to live in this place and have the level of service that we do. We had a presentation earlier tonight that presents us with some pretty stark. I mean, property, everyone already knows it feels overtaxed, property taxes through the roof. The the tax model that for the state that we live in is broken. The legislature did not provide any assistance to any governmental agent and we can't, we're we're tapped in terms of the the levers that we can pull, the the revenue sources available to us are highly limited. And building more houses over the long term costs the city money. There's more streets, there's more services to be provided. It doesn't pan out, it doesn't pay for itself. If you look at Snoqualmie, they pay almost twice as much a mill rate on their houses as the folks in North Bend do. And people don't understand that. I think it's like one point four, don't quote me on this, and Snoqualmie, it's almost twice that that people pay against the value of their house to the city of Snoqualmie. And I don't mean to, I I would say we're getting a bargain, but except it's it's a relative comparison. So what we have, you know, the model presented to us, there are sales tax. And boy, that get, you know, people, other people, other than the people who live here are then contributing to support our quality of life. That's a pretty good, that's what we hope for. And that's what the fiscal sustainability study that this, that we have hired consultants to come in and help us look forward and look ahead and make sure that we aren't going to fall off a cliff. And boy, we're standing on a precipice in spite of the best efforts of a whole lot of folks for a whole lot of reasons, including COVID and what our society has been through to get it to this point. Because everybody was, we were being kind and now, you know, you got to pay the piper a little bit. No one wants fewer police officers. No one wants to say, oh, no call too small. The current motto in the contract we have for police services is no call too small. And I am sorry for the story that was shared earlier. I don't know the details. I can't imagine there is some substory there. I don't know that that's, you know, a single metric is, that's not a basis for a decision. There's one parcel of land, thirty five acres, so here's the, here's the other soapbox. We have nothing to say about any of this. What drives development in this town is private property and private property ownership and the respect for property rights. And boy, that's another one that I think we would all largely agree on. If you own something, you don't want anybody telling what you can or cannot do with your piece of property. Currently Puget Western owns a thirty five acre parcel. They're not going to do anything with it. There it sits. Somebody, you know, in order for that parcel to generate any sort of revenue that's going to come into this city and help us again, support the quality of life that we've become accustomed to and want to continue to support. Somebody's got to step up. Or we're hoping, Jamie has been marketing this for a long, I don't know how long, months, years. You know, it's the, and we have folks who are here tonight with us in the room. The person who's making this proposal is sitting right there. And and so, and so we vote this down or this doesn't move forward. And so let's say, I mean, so let me circle back to what's being asked. There's a developer's agreement that helps these folks be in a position to potentially acquire this parcel. And they're they're asking for two things. They're asking that they can be provided water either from Salau or from the city of North Bend. And if I'd been paying attention to water, you know, the whole conversation of water, I would ask that too. I'd say, oh, my goodness, I don't know which, you know, how this is going to figure out or who's going to charge me how much. But one of the things I do need to, for anything to happen, that parcel is water. And so let's remove that risk and by saying one or the other is going to at some point provide water. The other thing they're asking for is a reduction in impact fees, the the fees, a one time P U you pay off, pay off the top based on a series of calculations and so on and so forth, based on the traffic that's going to be generated and the sewer that's going, you know, the effluent is going to be generated. Well, that makes sense, except the city, the the development is agreement is written in a way such that there is a floor there that the city isn't going to end up holding the bag. If enough revenue doesn't come back to compensate for that tax, that reduction in impact fees, they're going to write a check back to the city anyway to make sure we're at least, I don't want to say made whole, but you get it, they're going to have to pay us something to make. It isn't a giveaway, right? We're going to, the city is going to receive something. So my point here, there's what's being asked is development agreement such that th- these folks could potentially arrange financing and acquire that parcel. Let's say this doesn't go forward. And then tomorrow, somebody, anybody with enough money can step right up to Puget Western, write them a check and own that parcel. And we as a group of people have zero, other than how it's zoned, to say about that or to influence that. You know, we're very limited, we can kind of set the guardrails. But we're not in a position to say, oh, no, we want it to be this, you know? That's not the city, if, you know, we don't have enough money to purchase the parcel. If we purchase the parcel, my goodness, the visions in this room, let's get together and envision what that possibly could be. But to ask someone who owns that to act in that way is beyond any, you know, we don't have that capacity and there's no way we can act other than, again, re, you know, we could rezone that parcel as open space. And if that's the ask, if that's what folks want, that that should be zoned as open space in a park, we're going to forego that sales tax revenue that, you know, the financial people that we've been listening to and that keeps writing is these reports. That's not physically sustainable for any of us. You know, then people aren't going to be able to live here. I mean, it's, it's this balance. And so again, back to if we're not choosing to put an auto mall there. It is true that this decision would facilitate the acquisition by a single buyer, the potential acquisition by a single buyer for this property. And no, they haven't, they don't, they don't have a tenant. We don't know who would occupy it, we don't know who would move in and therefore what would be built there. But if we don't act on this one, again, tomorrow, anyone else with enough money can walk in there, write a check, own that parcel. And we'd have nothing to say about it, it's not our decision. The only decision we face is whether or not we've are, want to say, you know, looking forward financially and fiscally, we need, you know, the the strategy has been, this is not news, that there be commercial development, retail development, you know, some light and dust EP two, Employment Park two, that that parcel not be used for houses. Because that makes it more expensive delivered, but rather it be used in some way to generate revenue that returns to the city again to help us pay the bills. Straight up. And if not this, then what? And as, you know, the gentleman said, if, how, why would we not be back here a year from now when the next developer interested party stand there and they don't need, again, if they don't ask for a development agreement, we've got nothing to say about it changing hands. And now it's somebody else owns it, could be anybody. That's not, that's not within our control. So it's, and so again, it's hard. I I appreciate the voices. I love the woods. I love the place. I get it. I have stood out in the meadow. We just, we are not going to be responsive to, we just can't start a conversation with everybody who comes to the microphone. That's just, that's not how this works. So, you know, we're, time isn't going to make, we could study it more, but there is nothing to study. There's no, yes, it's a very simple, straightforward development agreement. There is no more there, there. There is anything else there. It's very simple. There is no, what it says is they can sign up to get water from either of us. And they get this, you know, structured cut in impact fees were the acquisition to take place. Period, full stop. That's what's before us tonight. Do we know what they might build? No. Do we have any control? It's within, it has to meet the zoning. What we could do, yeah, we could rezone it, but we can't bust it up. I don't think, I mean, this could be a class, see, I have limits, it's a thirty five acre parcel. The owner could ask that it be subdivided and the city would have to subdivide it for within limits and laws and all that kind of stuff. It's a parcel of land within the city. Consider the broader context, the Growth Management Act, the city is a city because that's where people live and activities happen. And stores are within cities and sewers are within cities because then outside of the cities, you have stuff that isn't a city and which we're surrounded by. I just today, this morning, I woke up in central Illinois. Ninety five, ninety seven percent of all of Illinois is privately held. And I know because I have mapped the entire state of Illinois, the land cover of it. Eighty percent of it has a plow drug over it, corn and soybeans. There are not, there is not, I mean, to Washington State, over a third of this state is in public, public ownership. It's absolutely stunning and remarkable. That we have the national forest and then, you know, it was mentioned up to the middle fork. Well, at the end of the middle fork, it's not only the US Forest Service, Pete Sakes, it's the Department of Interior and the Alpine Lakes Wilderness. There's, there's even two federal agencies. You know, it's not lost on me. But here within the city, and I'm sorry, adjacent to the freeway, I get that it's the gateway to the middle fork up that road. There it goes. It's got truck ton on one side. It's got the interstate on the other side. People living there. I mean, it is within the city and it's been within the long-term vision of the city that eventually that parcel of land, the land within the city would generate revenue. And that's how, that's my, that's my city council hat, right? That's my responsibility to sit here and see that over time we continue to be able to live here and have the quality of life that we want to have here. So I'm stuck on, I mean, so again, we aren't giving away the store in this, by supporting this, we're treating the likely, we're you know, weighing in a little bit that these are the people who would take ownership of that parcel. And if not them, then who? Cause, or is it just going to sit there? Fell, I, you know, I, if someone wants to step up and has the money to build a gateway park or whatever it would be, or how would every, you know, that, that's those forces. I don't have enough money to do that. So this is the, you know, there's my two cents. I'm interested to hear what my fellow council members have to say.
Jocelyn, Mr. Tremolata.
Well, that was a great piece by a councilman. I couldn't agree more with most of, most everything he said. I would want to make sure we clear up a couple of things because there has been discussion about rushing and what have you. This, albeit it maybe didn't hit the neighborhoods till yesterday or today, but it did go through planning, planning commission, as you asked. I would argue, I'm surprised it did considering it's not a planning document. It's actually a business document, but it did. It got endorsed and reviewed by our planning commission. I spoke to the planning commission myself. It went through the CED's commission. All of those are public documents. All those are public meetings. Everyone could have participated and asked questions, made comments. And now it's here. So I did my best today to leave my phone number open and I made a ton of calls and talked to a ton of folks in town. I think there is a misrepresentation, which I think Councilman Jocelyn touched on quite a bit of what we're trying to achieve today, or what we're tasked with achieving today. Use is the big issue that we've heard all day. But as I clarified, it's been the same use since 1988. If, if this council, this body was ever going to resound it, there's plenty of opportunity. This council adopted comprehensive plans year after year that included EP2. It was always intended for this use. I understand that people don't necessarily agree with that today. I live out there. I live a stone's throw from this spot. I walk by it every day. I was also a part, so I'm a Salal member. I've been through all that process. I was here with all those meetings when this council before I showed up voted on our water agreement. And part of those discussions were economic development. The reason you needed that water agreement is so the city can be financially, financially stable in the future. This is all kind of full circle, right? It comes to this. And so the exit 34 parcels can get developed. We may not agree with what they are going to develop, but we're not the property owners. We don't have that. And if they come back with a master plan that's way out of those zoning, sure, then that's going to be a robust discussion. And I think after hearing all of your comments, I would be very surprised if they came back with a master plan that's outside of that zoning. Also, the development agreement at myself, itself, I would kind of echo councilman's kudos for James and, and the team and Dave Miller. I think the agreement as written is a very fair agreement. It's effectively a performance agreement. They have to perform. They have to bring this tenant. And they have to bring the development. If not, it goes away. So from a risk perspective, from the taxpayers, which is what this body is here to do is protect the taxpayers, not only today, but in the future. I, I think it makes sense. And so for those reasons and many others that Councilman Jocelyn mentioned, I, I support this. I would hope the council supports it and make clear what we're tasked here to do. And it is not to discuss a planning document, but rather the development agreement between the city.
Thank you. Ms. Tremolata. Okay. Any other council want to make a comment? At this point? Okay. Okay. Oh, sorry. Ms. Rustic.
So I do appreciate the, the comments of my council, the other council members. And I too sit on the economic development committee. And so I've had several weeks to consider this as it came through. And I have come to the same conclusion as many have shared tonight. And that is the economic development is asked, or the, 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 this is asking us to approve something that we do not know what it looks like. We don't know how much revenue is going to come from it. We don't, there are just so many things we don't know. And I would like to see something, a plan come back. I understand time is of the essence, but I would like to see some type of formal plan coming back. So that we know what it is we are approving instead of just, I think it was said, a black box. So for that reason, I will not be supporting this. That's all I have.
Ms. Rustic, anybody else? No, wait. Uh, Brennan.
Thank you. Mark, that was an excellent speech. I respect you and I respect your point of view. Errol. Same with you as going along with that. And I understand the intelligence that you guys are putting into this, the due diligence by meeting and talking with people. It's fantastic. I also want to say thank you to staff for bringing this forward. Your, your responsibility to us and to the community is to help bring opportunities that will help improve the community, especially on revenue and supporting our community services and so forth. So, so I just want to commend you again and not make you feel like this whole evening is beating up this decision because I respect the decision and it makes sense. And I do want to echo the point that if Middle Fork Development LLC had the funds to make this deal with Puget Western, we wouldn't be here tonight talking about this. They could be making that transaction. Um, and thank you for coming and speaking your, your piece here. The beautiful thing is that our concerned citizens are nice people. They don't come bearing pitchforks and torches, which is good. So at least we can have a passionate discussion. When the zoning was established in the eighties, as my colleague points out, the middle fork natural area wasn't there. Right? The residential developments that are now up there wasn't there. The, the middle school wasn't there. We didn't have our branding. I'm not even sure if we had our current vision and mission statement with respect to zoning, which, which I'm going to read really quick here. City mission statement. The mission of the city of North Bend is to create a highly livable community by working in partnership with its citizens to blend and balance the following principles. High levels of police, fire and emergency medical services. Build and maintain healthy infrastructure. Deliver quality public services, encourage strong local economy. Preserve the small town character of the community. Now let me read the city vision statement. The vision of the residents of North Bend put forth is one of preservation and enhancement. The community of North Bend wants to preserve its natural beauty and small town scale. The residents of the community also desire to enhance the built environment of the downtown, the riverfront, the community parks, new and existing residential neighborhoods and the community's gateway. Finally, our brand statement, we are a highly livable small town that is the premier outdoor recreation destination in the Puget Sound region. Easy to reach, hard to leave. Those words have been battered around quite a bit and embraced by several councils, at least the ones that I've served on and some that, that came before me. But now we're seeing the impact of what antiquated zoning can do to a community. It illuminates something that was in the dark. Now we are considering decisions that we've not had to do before specifically for that area. So it makes sense for us to reconsider what we want our community to look like. To find that alignment and to continue with our visioning exercise every new council, something I constantly implore this body to do. Up there, we had a meat processing plant at one point come through. Citizens came out, didn't pass. They fled actually. The National Guard installation, you know, the, these are big impacts on our community. And, and what it should have done is it should have activated this discussion that we're having. It should have activated this body, should have activated our need to revisit. Anchor ourselves on our vision and our zoning. We can change zoning. We can downzone, we can upzone, we can spot zone. There's all sorts of zone. I've been on the planning commission. We did a lot of zoning work. This is something we can do. What is built will be there long before we are gone. I always try to factor in not only our vision, our mission and, and talking with folks and a community I want to live in. But I also want to really focus on what the legacy of the decision will be and what the future will be for our community. It's a permanent infrastructure. I appreciate that it could activate some revenue for our, our community, but you know what? Our community has been building momentum on the businesses that we've been wanting to. A long, long time ago, we were pulling our hair out. How can we get the businesses that we want that reflect our small town character and charm? They've been coming. We have momentum. I understand that these folks here are under pressure because of the financial decision. But it's one of those things that we've faced this before and it hasn't always come out right. But I respect the fact that this developer agreement is, is very simple and, and easy to understand. But I do hear the community when this kind of decision sounds like we are buying from an Amazon fire sale. And we're all concerned about buyer's remorse. I am among everybody in the room that, okay, what am I actually agreeing to? Because I've been here long enough to see decisions come back around and bite me. So our community through our focus on our branding and our focus on commercial development has been building great momentum, as I said, on the commercial front. I'm seeing businesses pop up that the type, that are the types that we've always wanted. I personally think that this needs to go to work study, this topic, whether it passes tonight or not. And we need to discuss what our vision is and we, and who it is that we want to be when we grow up, grow up. And we need to take a step back to find alignment and revisit our zoning. That's within our purview. This is the third big event for that area that stirred up so much controversy. It's one of these things that I won't be supporting the DA agreement tonight. So I applaud Ms. Rustic for, for her candor on her position. But I do think that we need to talk about our zoning, our vision. We need to have that alignment. And I apologize to these respectable folks here, but I just won't be supporting the decision, the developer agreement this evening. Thank you.
Anybody else? No? Good.
Your honor.
Yes.
I'd like to move that this agenda bill be postponed until our next regular meeting.
Okay. I have to have a second on that one.
Friendly, the second or friendly amendment to that. Why about try to move it to a work study so that there's some discussion or you're trying to push it off for thirty days?
Your honor, I'd like to amend my motion. I'd like to move that this be postponed until our next, well. Then it's not before this is a motion. I, uh, all right. I would like to move that this be postponed until our first regular meeting in October.
First regular meeting, not a work study?
It can go to work study if it's postponed until October. I'm not, the work study is up to us to schedule. If we want a work study and talk about it, I'm trying to get us out of this situation we're currently in with a motion before us to be voted up or down and postpone that until, I mean, there's a lot of information. It didn't come up quick. Everyone feels rushed. I think at least it would give an opportunity for us to further consider it. And that may well include a work study. But my motion that I'm bringing for it is that it be postponed until our first regular meeting in October.
Okay. Okay. So let me get this right. So Kendra, how do I, what's the wording for this that's appropriate?
It is that the council member has the appropriate motion. So it's a motion to postpone to a date certain that date would be October first. It does not preclude though, going to a work study or having some other information or meetings. But it would come back to the council meeting on October 1st. So the motion before you is a motion to postpone this item to October 1st.
Okay. The motion, okay. So we'll start with that.
Point of clarification.
Is it debatable?
Sorry, one moment.
Thank you.
The motion to take, the motion to postpone to a date certain is a debatable motion.
It is debatable, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So at this time?
Point of clarification. What I thought I heard in the motion was bringing it back to October 1st. And the clarification I need is it doesn't matter if a work study happens or not. Is that, is that what I, is that correct? Is that the correct motion?
That's correct. And in the debate, you may request, for example, other processes, but the correct parliamentary procedure is motion to postpone to a date certain, which is why the council member has provided that first date in October.
So point of order, how do we get a work study in the meantime?
That is up to the chair and city staff for that work study discussion.
Actually, the way you do it by code is have the pro temp suggest it.
Which is what I kind of said, I'd like to see go to, and I'd like us to add an additional one. Cause I think along with this, we should be having a public safety conversation too.
This is why I'm seeking guidance from our parliamentarian to add this to the motion.
Can we do a 10 minute recess? Right now? There's several of us have to go to the bathroom. I'm asking a question. Can we have a 10 minute recess? Anybody? Can we thread this through really quickly at this point?
Mayor, you just announced a 10 minute recess.
Okay. Let's do a 10 minute recess.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience. Sorry to surprise you.
Okay, we are back in session. The motion before us is to, to move the motion to, to October 1st, 2024. Yeah.
And that makes the motion debatable.
Yes.
The only thing I would ask is if this motion does pass, is that he wouldn't like to add a work study?
Will do.
Agenda for this.
We will do that.
Question. It's not a contingency. An ask, which we will try to accommodate, correct?
Yes.
Yep.
It is going to the October 1st meeting, with or without work study, but we'll try to get a work study.
I just asked for a work study. I'm gonna assume we're gonna make it happen.
Right. But I'm saying it's not a contingency to put it back on the calendar for October 1st. The motion is to move it to October 1st.
Right. So in, in simple terms, if administration didn't want to have the work study, the work study wouldn't exist and it would still come back to us on October 1st. That's the contingency clarification. And then the other piece of it too, is that if, if it were to go to a work study, the timing is, is kind of iffy. And I know we had some, you know, just kind of discussion, is October 1st a critical date? I mean, it seemed arbitrary to me, but I'm just asking my colleague.
I guess one way to answer that is I'm willing to set up the work study if you want it. And if we can do it within that timeframe, unless you all reject that, we'll make it happen.
Question. Uh, what about the people that are asking for the developers agreement? Is that going to affect their timeline? Is this like, if we say, can you guys answer that? October 15th, you have to tell that. Okay. So that's still, it's them and the ability to do it if it goes forward. Okay. Thanks.
Okay. 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 We have the motion on the table. I'm going to ask for a vote now. And motion is to move this current conversation and motion to October 1st, 2024 regular meeting. Do I have all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
Opposed.
We got two opposed and the rest are in favor. So it passes. Five to two. Okay. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody who showed up tonight and spoke so eloquently. Thank you all.
They should.
Very much so. Drive safe, get some sleep. Drive safe, get some sleep.
I don't, I don't agree with that, I think if you have a residential concern, time and time again on a certain area, it's an elective body, we need to evaluate.
Item twelve, AB twenty four, six, zero, eight, eight, everybody, this is hot, we're still in meeting. Still in session.
I, I don't know about that, but what I do know as a representative of North Bend, and I keep seeing certain decisions coming forward.
Thank you, everybody.
And I don't necessarily.
Ordinance amending, AB MC, one point two, can I have your attention, everybody regarding code enforcement? Mrs. Rosenberg, will you please provide the staff report?
Good evening, mayor, council. Uh, this is referring to Agenda Bill twenty four, zero, eighty on page sixty one of your packet involving code enforcement. I worked with several members of city staff to amend three sections within chapter one point two zero of the North Bend City Code. And to adopt a new section, which would also be within, uh, chapter one point two zero of the North Bend City Code. This chapter applies when the city's code enforcement official determines that there is a violation of the North Bend Municipal Code that has occurred or is occurring. Administrative enforcement under this chapter occurs to, through a non judicial hearing process and decision making for abating nuisances within the city. These code changes will provide for an administrative process that allows an opportunity for those property owners and those violators of our code to present their side to our hearing examiner through an appeal process. The administrative hearing process is much less time consuming than going to, for example, Superior Court. And it is much less expensive for the city as well. Because nuisance enforcement and abatement deals with property rights, the process should include a right to appeal any final, uh, notice of violation. The hope is that the administrative decision will satisfactorily, uh, resolve the issue without an appeal by either party to the Superior Court. If the problem can be resolved through this process, it's generally simpler, faster, and less costly than initiating this enforcement action through a more formal process, like I mentioned, through court. Currently, chapter one point two zero of the North Bend Municipal Code does not explicitly provide a right of appeal to a person who has been served with a notice of violation. It has been some time since the city council has reviewed this chapter of the North Bend Municipal Code. And because we're dealing with people's, uh, property rights and potential monetary penalties, it is best practice to provide this right of appeal that you see before you in the ordinance. In practice, the city has provided the right to appeal within the notice of violation and discussion about the code enforcement matter. However, to ensure uniform notice to those property owners of the process and uniformity within the process, we have drafted this ordinance, um, within chapter one point two zero of the North Bend Municipal Code. If you have additional questions, I'm happy to answer them as well as Colin Mercer is here, the city's code enforcement official.
Just one quick one, we're essentially making it easier for somebody who's in violation to work with the city to get the violation fixed, correct?
It doesn't necessarily make it easier to fix the violation. It makes it easier to go through the process if they disagree with the city's position finding a violation or a penalty. So it does make that process easier.
Okay, thank you, and Colin, thank you for staying this late.
Thank you, Mr., uh, anybody else have any questions? Anybody? Nope. Okay, if any members of the audience would like to comment on this agenda item, we would invite you to come forward to the podium at this time, if you have any. I know I've lost, not everybody, don't ever say that.
That's wrong.
So, um, let's see if I lost my track, uh, yeah. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand on the, through the virtual platform and we will take your comments after in-person comments. Please remember to state your name, your address, and for the record, and you have three minutes to speak. Anybody? Okey dokey, anyone line?
No one online, your honor.
Thank you, Bree, we're gonna push on through. Uh, Mr., let's see, council member Jocelyn, please make.
I move to approve AB two four zero eight eight, and then amending NBMC sections one dot two zero dot zero six zero, one dot two zero dot zero eight zero, and one dot two zero dot one zero zero, adopting a new section, one dot two zero dot one zero five, related to appeals and code enforcement as a first and final reading.
That was excellent.
Can you read that by heart?
Second. So that was amazing.
Second.
And seconded by, I've got, everybody's wanting to second that one, Ms. Rustic. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, that passes unanimously. Okay, item thirteen, AB twenty four, zero, eight, nine, motion authorizing contract with PH Consulting for the twenty twenty five sidewalk gaps project, Mr. Regos.
Thank you, Mayor Mary, good evening, council, page seventy one in your packet. This is our two thousand, or twenty twenty five sidewalk program for the city of North Bend. It's an aggressive sidewalk program, but, uh, again sidewalks are all about quality of life improvement for our residents and also a big public safety improvement. And we have six projects on the list, um, southeast one fortieth street, up near Twin Falls Middle School, that's been in our six year TIP for many years. We have Thrasher Avenue, uh, near the ranger station that gets you out to Torgerson Park and also Ranger Station cottages. We have North Bend Way sidewalk that connects the new Dogren Family Park out to Snoqualmie Valley Trail. Also, North Bend Way, um, sidewalk on the north side, um, out near Tanner Road and one fortieth street. And then we have a series of projects in downtown, fifth street, sixth street, main pier, and there's some water and storm drainage improvements as well. We have some, uh, poorly functioning infrastructure in that area. And then finally, we have Stilson Avenue sidewalk, which will be next to the, um, Mountside Road, North Bend Way roundabout. So it's an aggressive program, we'll be paying for this through, uh, transportation impact fees, transportation benefit district, um, a little bit of, uh, water, uh, uh, impact fees we have as well, as well as storm drainage. And we're hopeful to get some grant dollars from the community development, uh, block grant program. So, um, we'd like to start the design this fall, winter, and spring so that we're ready to advertise these projects in quarter two of twenty twenty five so that we can build these projects in quarter two through quarter three of twenty twenty five. Happy to take any questions.
Mr. Regos, abstract.
That five hundred and forty thousand, the cost impact, is, is that just for the consulting or is that considered?
That, that's just the consulting, that's geotechnical engineering, that's topographical surveying, that's, uh, plan specifications, cost estimates for all three of these bid packages. So it's an aggressive program. It's five hundred and seventy four thousand dollars for all the engineering, the construction bids for this work will probably be in the order of close to three million dollars next year, which is consistent with soft costs being about twenty percent of a construction project.
Sorry, um, uh, number six, uh, does tie up with the, uh, proposed connection to the future roundabout project on, so my question is, um, could there potentially be, and does it make sense for us to do this design if that project doesn't move forward? Or what could be the impacts of doing that piece?
Yeah, if there's one project I would remove from this, if you wanted to just reduce your expense, it would be project six and wait for Mountside Road, um, North Bend Way roundabout to be built first. But again, this, this project just gets its shovel ready, we're not planning on constructing anything with this project. So, um, that was the, the project number six was the smallest, um, amount of work because it's just geotechnical engineering, surveying, and civil engineering, and it's on a smaller scale, it's one or two blocks at the most.
And I'm looking for it, but I do believe it was approximately eighty thousand dollars and some change for that piece alone.
It was somewhere in that area.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else? No, I've seen nobody. Okay, if any members of the audience would like to comment on this agenda item, we would invite you to come forward to the podium at this time. If you have requested accommodation with a city clerk, please raise your hand on the virtual platform. And we will take your comments after in-person comments, please remember to state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to speak. Bree, do we?
No one online at this time, your honor.
Thank you so much, um, let's move on now, okay, Ms. Colin, I think this came through you.
Uh, motion to approve AB twenty four dash zero eight nine, authorizing a contract with PH Consulting for design of the twenty twenty five sidewalk gaps project in a form and contact approved by the city attorney in an amount not to exceed five hundred and seventy four thousand and four hundred dollars.
Second.
I like sidewalk projects, I think it promotes safety, it looks good, it makes our city more attractive and it helps our citizens be safe.
What council member Colin said?
Hi, President, PH Consulting, the side of sidewalk gaps project. One, I had a city attorney, amount not exceed five hundred and seventy four thousand and four hundred dollars. All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Thank you, I'm a bit fried, um. Busy travel to, uh, I appreciate all the people coming out and raising their concerns, I appreciate this council's healthy debate tonight. You know, we didn't see eye to eye on it, but I still think it was a good debate and worthwhile having. Um, I also just want to do a quick call out, I, today I was in the Public Health and Safety Committee meeting and, um, our, our police chief and captain showed up and they, they presented us with these pink badges that they're going to be wearing on their uniforms in October for, uh, Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Um, you know, given, given all the stuff that we have going on with contract negotiations and, uh, with the city of Snoqualmie, thank you for that clarification earlier, Mr. Jocelyn. Um, I, I was touched by the fact that this is a simple gesture that could have an impact on a lot of people. And the fact that the chief made a point, he said, if, if, if one female actually asks why pink and it, and it, and it encourages that person to go get a mammogram, then it's all worth it. And, and I really like that, that thinking, uh, that philosophy. So I just wanted to thank, uh, the department for, for that kind of consideration and taking that one extra unique step in, in a clever way, so thank you.
Uh, I agree with that, my mother died of, of breast cancer when I was nineteen, so I'm very much, um, for the pink. Uh, I even, when I had a golf cart business, I even made a pink golf cart with seats that had the pink ribbon and everything, so I'm all about that, that's awesome. Um, I would encourage if you have any extra money, if you can donate to the food bank or to the senior center, I think those are two communities that we need to continue to support, and, um, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Torgerson and Ms. Colin.
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Mr. Tramalata.
Uh, September twentieth is the Snoqualmie Valley Little League Golf Tournament, it's our largest fundraiser of the year. If you have some friends, sign up, I think we have a number foursome still open, but it's a great time over at Mountside Golf Course.
Let's see, Mr. Jocelyn.
Uh, nothing tonight, your honor, thank you.
That's okay, Ms. Rustic.
I'm just gonna echo, uh, what the, the, uh, council member said about the, the pink badge and, uh, thank you very much for that. That's all I have.
Mr. Gatto.
I'm happy that we're talking about this, cancer awareness, I mean, it really is an important thing and I, I think most of us have been touched by it with family members or extended family members, so it's really important to keep that aware. Um, in closing, I want to thank everybody that came today, I really appreciate input. Um, I wish we could get a full house most often and get input. Um, you know, it, it is a big decision, um, that property has been set up for commercial for years. Um, there's been many fits and starts with it. I think it's important for us to, to find the right, strike the right balance, I'm gonna do what's right for that community. And that, for that area and what's right for the city, for, you know, what we can do for long term financial. Um, the other thing, just in closing, um, it's getting dark earlier. Um, I'm beginning to see a lot of people going a little fast in the neighborhoods, so please watch your speed. Um, especially, you know, in, in the neighborhoods, the kids are out still playing, um, they're gonna be walking back and forth from school and we don't need any accident, so please watch your safety, your speed out there and be safe.
Okay, Mr. Miller. Thank you, okay. Uh, join me for my meetup with mayor series, hope you're awake tomorrow. Um, where residents are invited to stop by chat, ask city related questions that are important to you and connect. Okay, I will be at Hartwood Cafe on Wednesday, September fourth, which is tomorrow, coming up soon, ten AM to eleven AM. Regional, oh, I'll be there. Regional Animal Services of King County has joined the National Clear the Shelters campaign now through September tenth. Uh, adoption fees for cats and dogs era of any age is about, uh, is just thirty dollars, so the cost of a pet license, basically. The yard waste recycling program is back, it'll be held Saturday, September fourteenth, from eight AM to noon at Public Works, uh, here on the campus here. Uh, those attending are asked to use the Public Works entrance off of North Bend Way. The city is hosting a free shred event on Saturday, September fourteenth, from eight AM to twelve PM at City Hall. Are you doing some home organizing? Need to get rid of old papers and documents that are overtaking your desk and file cabinets, not me. Now is the perfect time to securely shred those and safely so. The shredded event is open to all North Bend residents, individuals can bring up to two file boxes or three grocery bags of documents. Please do not bring stiff metal, plastic bags or DVDs as they can jam the shredder, good to know. Okay, the always popular sip, suds, and sigh event is happening on Saturday, September fourteenth, it's a busy day on the fourteenth. From six PM to nine PM, grab your friends for a self guided evening of tasting and exploring the charm of downtown North Bend. For more information, check out our community calendar on the city website. And I will echo, Captain, thank you so mu- so much for giving us the patches this afternoon. It sets a really positive tone for being, uh, very aware of, uh, the importance of standing up to cancer on any level we can and those that have been through it and families as well. So, uh, thank you also to our community of members who showed up for our long meeting tonight, uh, that takes time and effort to, and a lot of courage to come forward and speak your minds and with your heart, so thank you for that, we wish to see that more often. And, uh, this, this council does listen, uh, so thank you very much, everybody have a great evening. We are now not quite ready to, but we're, executive session is gonna be happening in about a second here. We will now recess for the meeting, um, of executive session to discuss potential litigation pursuant to RCW forty two dot thirty dot one one zero one I. The executive session is expected to last twenty minutes, as there is no action anticipated as a result of the executive session. The videotaping of the meeting will stop at this time, thank you, everybody.